Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 6th, Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we'll start with our introductions of the diocese up here. We've got our Teacher of the Year Madison Little, welcome. Board Member Shannon Lancaster, Board Member Catherine Moore, Board Member Sam Tredaway, our Superintendent who usually sits next to me, he is at the county office right now, he's on his way, so he'll be here shortly, myself Rob Walter, Board Chair, our Board Vice Chair Greg Mills, Board Member Pam Escobar, Board Member Melanie Freeman, and our Board Attorney William Eisenhower. So we'll move on to our opening ceremony, which is just the Pledge of Allegiance today, so if you stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Board Members, we do have quite a heavy agenda today, lots of items on there. Do need a motion and a second to adopt our agenda for the evening. Thank you, Sam.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we've adopted an agenda for the evening. Moving on to the next item, Board Chair and Superintendent Comments, and I forgot my notes, but this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'm wearing the tie in honor of my mom who is a breast cancer survivor, and it's also National Principals Month. So, we as a board would like to thank our principals and the work that they do. I think really what we know, and the research shows us, is the leadership of the school building makes the biggest difference, makes a big difference to our kids. And principals spend, just all kinds of time above and beyond all of our principals do, and we sincerely, sincerely appreciate that. So if you see one of your principals out there, please say thank you for the work that they do. I think we have some of the best principals in Cabarrus County schools right here. We're going to skip the Superintendent Comments, we'll come back to that at a later time, and move on to reports. So we've had committees that have met in the last month, and I'll open it up to whoever wants to share which committee. Melanie?
Last month, thank you, last month we had a meeting of the Curriculum Committee. It met to give us updates on HB 805-115C 98.1. This is a parents' rights bill that was passed to give parents access through Destiny on your school's website to the content in your school's library. Through this portal, you may flag a book if you don't want your child to check it out, or have access to it. You can flag or opt out of books you don't want your child to have, so you may check into that. We also had an update on the CTE courses. This is very exciting to me, they are working very hard to add courses that are aligned with credentials and certifications in the state. So if you want your child to be involved in that, you need to check out our CTE website, and you can get a temporary login to check in, to check those courses out. The last thing, we are involved in vetting the social studies curriculum. It's not available for parent perusal right now, but the committee is vetting the curriculum. Now, the state gives the standards, and the district writes the curriculum. So, anyway, when the curriculum gets written, we're off. The curriculum gets written, you will have a chance then to view the curriculum for your child, and if there's any challenges there, you can do it at that time. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for the updates. Sam?
Thank you. Our interns met again today, the Board of Education interns, and we met with Amy Louder and Renee Moll to talk about student safety, and we had a really productive conversation. Our group did a good job of representing the schools that they're at and sharing what happens at their schools, and I just, I'm very impressed by this young group of leaders, and we talked about leadership and taking what you learn and bringing it back to your community. So, that was a good start. Next meeting, we're going to also discuss their service project and what the plan is for that, so we're working towards that. And then the other thing that I just wanted to add as far as committees, Transportation is going to meet on Wednesday.
Thank you, Pam. Greg, do you have any? Sam? Catherine?
Sam and I attended the Safety Committee last week, and I'm always impressed with the knowledge of this committee with security, especially with Carl Sane and Mickey Farmer and our Technology Department. And I just appreciate all of their staff that attends this meeting and outside resources of the people giving up their time to come that's concerned about the safety of our staff and our children, so thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Shannon?
Well, I'm always giving a shout out to the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, and they do have a busy October. They are going to have a cornhole competition. It is sponsored by a local business, but it will be what I call the old armory on Church Street, but it's, it's at that facility. And they're also having their luncheon at the end of October, so if you please check their website, they have a lot of that, a lot of things coming up that really benefit our schools.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to attending that luncheon. I think they do a great job every year of seeing all the good things that go on there. We did have a Finance Committee meeting, but essentially just a preview of what we're going to see tonight, so we'll see our budget and a discussion of our fund balance as well. And then we had our Fall Planning Session, and we talked about data, and that's the same presentation that Dr. Kapicki is giving to the county commissioners tonight. That's all I think we have for committees. So we'll move on, and our next report would be Construction Update with Mr. Brian Coen, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki wherever you are. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through all the projects, and then we'll, if you will hold your questions to the very end, and then I'll catch them all at one time, if that's okay. So, we'll start with Coltrum Web STEM Schools. So, over the last few weeks, we have multiple concrete pours that have been taking place early in the mornings. Those are milestones getting us to where we can hit the next phase of work on those areas. Structural steelwork continues to be installed in the connector area as well as the classroom wings. Good bit of concrete masonry work is taking place in the gym and dining, it's about 95% complete, and we're continuing to move over into the kitchen and the systems area. We also started metal stud framing on the C Wing, which is the first grade hallway. They've started installing mechanical duck work as well in that wing. We've had roofing insulation delivered to the site. The B Wing, which is our second and third grade hallway, that slab-on-duck is going to be poured later this week, as well as the asphalt binder on the car rider line in the next two weeks will get taken care of. And then we are scheduled for our Topping Out Ceremony November 10th is upcoming. Just some updated pictures showing the structural steelwork and masonry work taking place. That's in the kitchen area there and the dining, and those are our systems rooms, where our mechanical room, the pump and boiler room, the main electrical, the fire alarm, safety room is all located in these areas. And then that's that first grade hall showing the metal stud framing that's ongoing, as well as mechanical duck work, and plumbers are running copper water pipe. It gives you a visual of the gym area, as well as the dining area and the masonry work taking place, and the structural steelwork that's ongoing. That's a southern view, kind of looking towards the old courthouse theater there in downtown. Shows those classroom wings on the right, that same area there in the middle, and then the section to the left that doesn't have anything ongoing yet, that's the EC, art, music, and administrative spaces. And then that's just the eastern view showing the multipurpose and playground field space there in the back, that classroom courtyard area where the crane is set up in between the two main classroom wings there. Moving on to the Mary Frances Wall Project. So the pre-engineered metal building is about 90% complete, roof panels are completed, so we're temporarily somewhat dried in now at that project. They are adding some additional support in the existing wing to support new rooftop units that we'll be installing. City of Concord has coordinated the installation of the main transformer, and they are pulling wire from the street to that transformer now that we will energize and use as temporary power. Again, overhead mechanical installation has started in this project as well. All the temporary seating around the perimeter of the site has been completed. We continue to work with Lyles Construction and the Grounds Department on making sure we maximize the playground space because that's vitally important in this pre-K facility. We're also going to be working with Meteor Blanchenship for the furniture package on this project, which we will start those meetings here in the next few weeks. And this project, got news this week, has actually picked up some time on the schedule and is slated for an April 26 substantial completion date. That's a looking, that's a view from Warren Street looking across at the new entrance for buses and staff and visitors. Here's the interior showing the mechanical duck work being installed. Just an updated view showing the metal building contractor finishing up the exterior wall panels and insulation around the perimeter. That shows the existing roof structure on the 95 Wing, as well as the little connector in between that they're getting ready to install the roofing on as well. That just gives you a nice overall view of the entire campus that we're working on to develop. That entrance on the right-hand side of that image is going to be our car rider line entrance, as well as some staff. The one on the left will be the bus entrance, as well as staff and visitor entrance. Where those trucks and that trailer sitting, that's going to be one of the new playground spaces that will be fenced in and accessible from all the classrooms inside the building. And then that's just an updated arrow showing the main front entrance and drop-off area. On the Opportunity School, interior CMU walls, block walls are being installed on the inside. They continue to install the exterior metal studs around the perimeter of the building. They're also working on interior metal stud work creating the classroom spaces. The exterior wallboard's being installed just ahead of the spray foam, which comes in after that. The mechanical contractor as well, and this one's installing the hangers and the duck work down the main area of the school. The electricians continue to work with the masons as they rough in those CMU walls. The mock-up panel continues to progress along, making sure that the subcontractors understand what the expectation is for the finish and the quality of work that we expect from them. And this schedule continues to hold a June 26 completion date for next year. There's some of the interior CMU work taking place. Brick veneer has started on the backside. And that's that exterior protection board, and then the spray foam following in right behind it. There's an updated southern view showing the entire campus and where we're at. And then that's looking towards the northwest, and you see the PLC in the top there and the connection that we have with that campus. Quick update on the Fuel Farm Project. So the transfer tanks have been installed from the new canopy over to the tank pads and the island pads. Footings have been poured for the new canopy structure. The new 60,000 gallon tank pad's going to be poured sometime this week. We awarded the site work improvements to Carolina Site Works out of China Grove, and in the next three weeks, they'll start on the asphalt resurfacing project part of this project. The canopy structure actually started today and is going to continue over the next couple of weeks. We're trying to track in October, end of October to complete this project, but we've hit a couple of weeks of weather here that they've been delayed, so it may slide into November, but I assure you that Matt and his team over at Transportation have, you know, temporary measures in place for fueling, like they've been taking care of since we started. That gives you the visual aerial update of the large 60,000 gallon tank pad. This shows the fuel lines coming from that tank pad over to the new canopy and island. And that just gives the overall, showing the existing tanks that we're going to maintain and repurpose. Those will be our gasoline tanks, and then the new 60,000 gallon tanks will all be our diesel tanks. And that is all I had. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Coen. Board Members, Pam?
Hi. I saved my questions. So I have two. For Mary Frances Wall Playground, so you showed us where one was going to be, or there's going to be another one?
There's multiple playgrounds. So we have, we really have four playgrounds attached to this building, secured, accessible from all the interior classrooms, because that's one of the requirements for the pre-K centers, that they can walk out of their classroom into the playground and it's a secure environment. So we have four playgrounds situated around this school.
Okay. And then for the Fuel Farm, there looked like there was a house, is that a house or an office?
That's a house, that's an adjacent property that we don't own, but that's an adjacent property to us, and it is, it is a house.
It is a house.
Somebody does live there, yes.
And we communicate with them?
We've tried multiple times, gone and knocked on the door three different times during the day, morning, noon, and afternoon, evening, and have yet to get anybody to come to the door and answer me, so.
But no complaints?
No complaints, so that will be when I hear from them.
Right, that's what I figured.
That's when I made them mad, so I'll talk to them then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Anybody else? Sam?
So, are you driving the PowerPoint?
I am, yes sir.
Can you go to your drawn shot that shows the Opportunity School in juxtaposition to the?
PLC.
Yeah, PLC.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm just curious, the two projects that you've talked about tonight have angled roofs?
Yes.
And, as opposed to flat roofs?
Yes, sir.
Is this?
A change or a trend?
Yes, that's my question again. Because, I mean, that picture shows-
It's a byproduct of the type of construction. We were concerned on the budgets going into these projects, so we were looking at alternative ways beside the traditional, you know, load-bearing CMUs or red iron structural steel that may help accelerate the time on the project, which would then maybe help reduce the cost. And those structures, although you can put what we would consider flat roofs on them, they're not as conducive. You know, we looked at multiple iterations of this with higher pitches, lower pitches. It really was just a byproduct of the timing and what we felt like was going to be a more cost-effective way to get the spaces that we needed, because it's a little bit simpler buildings, you know, altogether, both of them are. And so that's why they have sloped roofs with the metal roofs. And yeah, my wife reminds me all the time that I should put metal roofs on all the schools, you know, because that's the best thing to do.
I just know that water likes to run downhill. That's the only-
And, yeah, and if memory serves, we tried this concept on Arbrow MacAllister. The classroom wings were originally designed with sloped roofs on them, but again, it became cost prohibitive through COVID and the cost increase we were seeing, so we had to pull it back out, so.
Just curious, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I may have missed it in the presentation, it was probably there. Are we on track with Coltrum Web Elementary? Is it still planning?
We are, we are really right on track, yes sir.
Really right on track?
Right on track, yes sir, we are, so.
My other question is because I've gotten a question from the neighbors.
Yes.
That lower playground at Mary Frances Wall, sort of abandoned area down there, do we have any plans for that?
We are, we're going to, we're sitting on that right now until we kind of see where we land with the overall budget and what funding we have available to us to make some improvements down there. At the end of the day, that is still school property, and it will be maintained as school property. So yes, in some respect, it'll stay as it is and be, you know, accessible to the community. As far as any improvements we can make, that is yet to be determined.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I guess my question, was this Topping Out Ceremony, have we done that before?
We did, we did it with Arbrow MacAllister, Rogers likes to do, and it was a little nice there because they were able to bring the kids out, and they could see the beam and final beam being raised up, and the kids were on the playground. In this instance, we're actually carrying the beam over to the existing Coltrum Web School, and all the kids and staff are going to get to sign that beam, and then we'll take it back to the site. It's also kind of an employment appreciation for the subcontractors that gives the opportunity for Rogers to thank them for the work that they put into place.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. With our Superintendent joining us again, do you want to, you have prepared remarks? All right, we'll go step back to 4.02 with the Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate two of our employees as best in their field. Dr. Richie Wells, Principal at WM Irvin Elementary School, was named the Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year for 2025, and Mr. Willie Porter, an Exceptional Children's Impact Teacher at Wyancoff Elementary School, has been named the 2025 Exceptional Children Teacher of Excellence. Congratulations to both of these individuals on the recognition for the outstanding work they do in our schools. Reminder to all of our parents, October 10th is the end of the quarter for traditional calendar schools. Those schools will dismiss early on Friday. Early colleges will operate on a normal schedule on Friday. In addition, all Cabarrus County schools will be closed to students on Monday, October 13th for a Professional Development Day. The early college students will also be held on Tuesday, October 14th, and Wednesday, October 15th for staff workdays. A new thing you've probably noticed recently, the development of our Director of Communications, Mr. Phil Furr, is now conducting a Wednesday weigh-in. Each Wednesday, we invite families and staff to participate in our Wednesday weigh-in, which is a quick two-question survey designed to gather feedback on timely topics that matter most to our school community. These short check-ins available in the Parent Square Feed for district parents give us timely insights into how families are experiencing our schools, from the communication and safety to engagement and support. The feedback we receive each week helps guide our decisions, strengthen transparency, and ensure that every voice has a place in shaping the future of Cabarrus County schools. It's another way for us to continue to reach out to our community and try and communicate with, with our community to get feedback from them. Last week, we asked our parents about their attendance at school events this year, and 88% responded that they have attended an open house, a game, a concert, or other school-wide community event. If you haven't attended an event at your school this year, I want to highlight the incredible fall activities happening across all of our schools, from athletic events and marching band competitions, to career fairs and cultural celebrations. These experiences strengthen school spirit and community pride, reminding us that education extends well beyond the classroom. Just this past weekend, there were many events culminating with the Cox Mill Band Event that took place all day Saturday with many bands coming from across the region to represent their schools as well as ours. It was a sensational event, and it was well-attended, and it's just another example of the excellence that takes place here on a daily basis with all the events that are occurring here in Cabarrus County Schools. So I encourage anyone that wants to be part of this to participate and to become involved and to attend these events. And I thank Mr. Furr for his initiative in trying to reach out and help us communicate better with our communities. Well done. Our Future Fair and Program Choice Registration, Cabarrus County Schools will hold its annual Future Fairs on October 15th, 2025, at the Cabarrus Arena Event Center. This event features our Program Choice Fair, as well as College Fair, Career Fair, and Military Recruiters. This has become one of the most attended community events of the year for Cabarrus County Schools, and we look forward to seeing our families on this evening. All our Program Choice Schools will be on hand to answer questions, as well as more than 100 college, military, and career recruiters. Program Choice applications will open on October 15th for the 2026-27 school year. The Futures Fair, as well as open house events currently underway at our Choice Schools, are a great opportunity to see what is offered in the Cabaret County Schools, and we intend to continue to ask questions about those programs. You may find out more about these events and the application process by visiting the website. In a reminder, the Coltrum Web Elementary School Community Meeting will take place on November 12th at 6:00 PM. Cabarrus County Schools will host the second of two community meetings as part of the stakeholder engagement process for the Coltrum Web STEM Elementary Attendance Boundary Project. This meeting will be held in the gym at Arbrow MacAllister STEM Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Several of us Board Members did attend the Charger Cup this weekend, and we're very proud of how our bands did with several coming in first place, and the volunteers and the effort that went on was just amazing, so big shout-out to all the, all the efforts. All right, we'll move, jump back into our Report Section, and our next one was 5.03, which is the Audit Report for fiscal year ending June 30th, and we have Mr. Penn and Mr. Adam Setperich with Anderson Smith and Wike. Welcome.
Terrific, thank you, Board Members. Appreciate you being here. Adam is our partner at Anderson, Smith &amp; Wyke. I'm going to point out that the external auditor reports really directly to you. He does not have a direct line to me as the CFO. Tonight's your opportunity to ask questions about the audit, how the audit was performed, what the outcomes of the audits were, and if you're bored, that's a good thing. We like boring audits, just ask Winston Salem. So, you know, Adam's going to take you through some basic financial information, but again, take advantage of the time that he's here tonight, because he's extremely knowledgeable. We don't fear the auditor, right? Because we run a clean ship, but more importantly, I found him to be an excellent thought partner as we go through certain questions that we have about how to interpret certain things. So I'll say it publicly, I appreciate your guidance on those things, and we see you as a partner more than, more than a foe. I'll put it to you that way.
Thank you.
All right? But this is your show to run. I believe if you go with the right button, you'll be able to move through your thing.
All right. So, we have a audit report here, 79 pages, part of the packet, but as always, we do a little summary, just, the 79 pages, they're not all important. If you ever find yourself in need of entertainment and want to read through the 79 pages, the majority of the presentation is built from Exhibits 3, 4, 7, and 8. Those are the four most important pages outside of the opinion letters and the findings pages of the financial statements. There is a change to the financial statements this year. There was a new GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Boards issued GASB 101 that added a few more pages. Basically, sick leave is now a component of your net position. So Exhibits 3, 4, 7, and 8 are all built on your fund balance. To me, that is the most important number to you, to management is the money you have available to spend. After we take those fund balance numbers, we then start adding assets and liabilities, like the value of your new buildings, the cost of the state pension liability, annual leave, and now sick leave. So there was a $51 million decrease in your net position because sick leave is now a liability in your net position. And again, that doesn't mean anything to the amount of funds you have available. Sick leave was paid as it's used, it's accrued, sometimes transferred to the state as credit towards retirement, sometimes used and paid out. The $51 million represents an estimate of the outstanding sick leave that could be paid out over the next 20 years. So, that was a new GASB issued, the opinion letter and the letter to the board. There's a three-page letter letting you know how the audit went, and that we had any difficulties in conducting the audit, any disagreements with management on how to apply GASB 101 would be detailed there. None of those things, but there is caveats in the opinion letter and in that letter letting you know that these are now compliant with GASB 101, indicating an increase or decrease in net position, increase of liabilities of $51 million. But again, back to the most important pages, the fund balance numbers, the first few slides here are just some comparisons from the last three years. You can see cash on hand declined, it's under $10 million compared to the last two years. Your fund balance, same thing, cash is the majority asset that makes up your fund balance, just under $6 million of fund balance, right around $4 million available to appropriate, and again, a decrease from the previous two years. And we'll get to the numbers that actually make up the data in these charts here after this one. You can see that the change in fund balance, your revenues and expenses both went up, the green bar being the decrease in fund balance. Your budget is giant, your fund balance, although it was millions of dollars, is just a small component of your total revenues, total expenses. So even just this, you know, little change in that green bar going negative really reduced your fund balance to, to pretty much just operational levels now. You're to a point where there's very little available in your, in your fund balance to appropriate for future years, and so you're basically budgeting on current year appropriations from the county, the state, and the federal government. So, again, those graphs tell one story, but here's the detail. You can see that cash and cash equivalents, 9.3 million compared to 17 million- You can see that cash and cash equivalents, 9.3 million compared to 17 million last year. Receivables of $297,000. Those receivables are also part of your fund balance that is restricted. You cannot appropriate fund balance that you have not collected as of June 30 from the year before. So it's restricted for usage. So when you look at your various categories of fund balance, the $297,000 of receivable is restricted, cannot be appropriated in the 25-26 budget. Same thing with inventories and pre-pays. Inventories and pre-pays are already cash out the door. They are assets to you in the form of tires, gas, nuts and bolts, and the fact that you have paid an expenditure in advance. A lot of vendors before they start up July 1 want you to pay in advance. So again, these are assets, but they're not available to appropriate because they're not in the form of cash as of June 30. So that inventory and the prepaid's number, $964,000, can be found in that fund balance number below as non-spendable. So when you look at the two categories of fund balance you do have to appropriate, the $5.5 million of total fund balance, really just four and a half of it is available to appropriate next year's budget. And that's across both Funds Two and Eight. We've always talked about these local funds, the general fund and the other special revenue fund as combined. But now that your fund balance is at five and a half million, I just wanted to go ahead and let you know that your general fund has 2.9 million of that 5.5. And the other special revenue fund, which is mostly restricted funds, Medicaid comes in there. There's a few non-restricted funding sources that come in there. So there is a fund balance available to appropriate, but a lot of it is made up of private grants, state, federal grants, Medicaid money. And that fund balance is 2.6 million. So that's the breakdown of that 5.5. Again, we've always looked at those combined. But again, when you're down to five and a half million, I think it's more important to see those individually. And again, on Exhibits Three and Four, you can see those breakdowns. Your general fund used $6.8 million of fund balance, and your other special revenue fund used $3.8 million of fund balance to get you to that net decrease there at the bottom of that first column of nearly $10.6 million. Your revenues were $115 million compared to $103 million last year. And your expenditures were $125.8 million compared to basically $100 million last year. So again, a significant usage of fund balance. I will say that in the revenue section, there was like a one-time transfer from the Kids Plus Fund into the general fund. They were sitting on $5.5 million of non-restricted funds. You provide that service, you make money. They still have 3.8 million on hand, or 3.5 million on hand. So again, that was a new revenue that you have not typically had, a $1.6 million transfer from your Kids Plus, after-school, before-school care into the general fund. Any questions on where you stand fund balance-wise in your usage this year?
Board members? Sam?
As our auditor, are you comfortable with our fund balance?
If you can live within your current appropriations, you can survive on $5.5 million of fund balance. There's a certain amount needed just for cash flow purposes and timing of revenues, but it's tight. You don't have the ability to approve projects that you don't have funding for. In some aspects, that makes decisions easier. But also, you lose flexibility in implementing new programs or new hires. So this is low. This is low for your size. You've been carrying a healthy fund balance, but it's never been obscenely large. I mean, again, when you have, you know, $400 million coming through between all your funds, depending on the year for capital outlay, having $20 million of fund balance is really, it's like the average person having $1,000 in the bank. It's not just, you know, a significant hoarding of money, especially if you have $20 million of fund balance and it fluctuates up and down $2 or $3 million. Because again, you want to spend what's appropriated for your students in the year you receive it. So but a change of fund balance of $2 or $3 million in a swing is not a large amount. So you've been operating in that window of spending just about everything you received. There was obviously an opportunity to increase fund balance with the COVID-19 funds, a lot of indirect costs charged to federal programs, a lot of federal money to implement new programs, to spend on things. All that money is expired as of December 31, so you're down to, again, just living within your appropriations in the current year.
Thank you. I appreciate that candor.
So do we have $1.5 million in the fund balance? Is that correct?
You have $5.5 million of fund balance in local and other special revenue, four and a half of it available to appropriate and spend above and beyond what you collect in the 25-26 year.
Okay. Because I thought we had $1.5 million from...
That's local fund too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. So that's, I told you, we were, we've always talked about the local fund and the other special revenue fund kind of combined, but I think it's a little bit more important to distinguish those because the other special revenue fund, again, is, a lot of it is made up of restricted sources, having to spend it on a certain program. And so when you look at the 2.9 million of general fund balance, again, Exhibit Three and Four would show you those numbers, that 2.9, the inventory is sitting in there. So that non-spendable inventory is in that 2.9. So that takes it down to 2 million. And then you have a receivable of $300,000 that you can't appropriate yet because it wasn't in the door in the form of cash as of June 30. So that takes you down to 1.8 or 1.7. So that's how we get to what you really have available to appropriate, this unassigned number, that $1,531,000. That is your general fund balance available to appropriate. The 2.7 of assigned, that's the dollar sitting over in fund date.
So if we encounter another deficit like we did last year, what happens?
You run late at a county meeting. Or you find other funding sources. But yeah, you have very little wiggle room with $1.5 million in local and the 2.7 available in fund date. So yeah, emergencies become requests from the counties. A nasty surprise in a state budget becomes requests from the counties. So harvesting that relationship with the county becomes vital to implementing any new spending.
So the Kids Plus was a one-time transfer that we cannot count on again?
You could count on it two more times if you wanted to take everything from them. But yeah, there is $3.5 million of cash sitting in the Kids Plus Fund after this $1.6 million that you collected this past year. So it's one time in that you may have chosen to do it one time, but you do have $3.5 million over there. And again, it's unrestricted. There's no federal or state monies that come into there that require you to hold those funds in that fund. So I work with a lot of districts that any profit made in after-school care gets sent to the schools or sent to the general fund. So but yeah, there is still $3.5 million over there, so.
And you may have said this, to be a healthy school system financially, where should our fund balance be?
This question is asked here almost every year and at a lot of meetings I go to. And there is no right answer because every district is different in their funding sources, their percentages of federal money versus state money versus local. You are in a heavily locally-funded district, just given your demographics. So you would need more fund balance because your state allocations, your federal allocations, aren't as robust per student as some other districts. The state is pretty comparable, but your federal monies are a lot lower than other districts your size with different demographics. So the fact that you receive most, or a significant portion of your funding percentage-wise compared to other districts means it is a little bit more important to have more on hand because you can't always rely on them to agree with your decisions on programs you want to implement and funds you want to spend. You're also at risk of unfunded mandates from the state. The state issues a 3% raise across the board. They'll cover those state employees that are paid out of that state fund, which is the majority of your employees. But you have $100 million worth of revenue and expenses in local that a 3% increase on a significant portion of that expenditure is $3 million that you now don't have unless you do another transfer. So the fact that you are proportionately higher locally-funded, I think means you would want to have more fund balance than somebody else. So I can't just say 5% is a good number or 6% is a good number. Again, we talked for years about the numbers that you had as being good numbers. So this here is new territory, I think, for Cabarrus County Schools.
Hey, Pat. Greg?
So as I look at $10.5 million in the negative, and I looked through the report, it looked like the biggest drivers of that were things that were initiatives that were started, programs that were started under ESER funds. And then when the ESER funds went away, we had to go to local to continue those. And then also the salary study that gave classified employees significant salary raises in the last year.
That's right.
That sounds correct?
Yeah, the two biggest factors. I don't know how much of your ESER programs came into local, dollar-for-dollar. But yes, there was a $10 million decrease in federal funding this year. A lot of those ESER funds were for programs that cut off or one-time purchases, but there was definitely programs that moved over to local. But yeah, that $10 million of federal lost funds and then a seven-plus-million-dollar increase to salaries comes along with benefits. So yeah, those were two big drivers in the going from making $3.7 million to using nearly 10.6. I mean, those two numbers alone, you know, work out perfectly almost to that $14 million swing that you had from profit to loss this year.
Yeah, I think the third one was, you just mentioned, the pension liability and the healthcare for retirees.
Yeah, so the pension liability is the giant liability in the net position, but the pension benefit. So for every dollar of qualified salary, there is 24 cents of pension, post-employment benefits, disability income, and yeah, the retirement sent up to the retirement system. For every dollar, it's 24 cents, you know, and on top of FICA. So $7 million of raises equates to an extra 30% of that in benefits. So yeah, that's a significant driver of that decrease in fund balance for sure.
I'll approach the podium just to set the record straight a little bit on the ESER funds. That really wasn't the biggest driver we saw last year. Remember, we did two fund balance appropriations. One was for the new ELA curriculum with over 2.3 million, right? And the other one was over $700,000 that we did for crumble purchases during the year. So I just want to make sure we're clear about, yeah, we've all acknowledged classified salary study was the biggest driver, but the other two big pieces that we had out there were the one-time ELA curriculum purchases and the crumble purchases as well. Not so much on the ESER side.
Thank you. And so since Winston-Salem, Forsyth County Schools have already been invoked, would this annual report, would that raise the red flags that we would need to be able to avoid that situation? Or do we need a deeper audit?
Yeah, so Winston County...
Winston-Salem, Forsyth.
Winston-Salem, Forsyth is not a client of ours. I spend a lot of time up here every year giving opinion on the change in fund balance and where you stand in fund balance. And we're really just hired to give our opinion on the accuracy of the statements. But that's, you know, fairly quickly. It's in the opinion letters. We think these financial statements are accurate. But given that our firm works on 90 school systems, I work on 20, a lot of the presentation is contextual change, a history of what's, you know, what we've been through with you for the last 10 years on where your fund balance goes. So I think the discussions we have every year inform the board of what a third party thinks of your fund balance changing, going up and going down. And I think you taking that into account and listening and not just saying, oh yeah, sure, but you're an auditor. Don't worry, we got this. And that's never been the mentality of this annual event, of this discussion of where do we stand in fund balance? What is the healthy fund balance number? I think approaching an audit, approaching your fund balance with those kinds of questions and that kind of discussion immediately takes you off the table as, you know, worrying about being a Winston-Salem Forsyth. Because again, you know, you are getting presented with accurate information per our audit and my opinion, Phil's opinion, on what you need to do to make sure you're making the best use of funds.
Thank you. Anybody else? So just on that second to last page, it says cost per student. Is that $11,482 per student that's costing us?
Yeah, excluding the capital outlay.
So that's gone up?
Yep, and driven a lot by that local funds increase.
Okay.
Federal went down because again, the $10 million decrease mostly related to those ESER funds. If you would, there is one more fund. This is good news. Your other type of fund, other than those governmental funds, the state, federal, local, other special revenue fund, you've got the Kids Plus Fund, which is a business-type fund. But more importantly, you have a school food service fund. Again, with COVID, there was a significant increase in reimbursement rates. There's also been significant increases in salaries and food costs. So statewide, a lot of child nutrition funds are starting to suffer in that it is expensive and it is difficult to feed kids for $4.01 a meal. Luckily, your school food service fund, if you look at that top number, to me, that cash and cash equivalents when it comes to business-type funds is the most important number. For these funds, net position and fund balance is one and the same. We actually recorded sick leave directly into their net position or their fund balance because again, they're one and the same. So when you look at cash on hand, that is what is available. Cash minus your current liabilities is what you have available to spend, and that is $12.6 million, and it's an increase of about $500,000 from last year. So your child nutrition fund is profitable, can sustain itself, has $12.5 million in the bank. It will not become anytime soon a burden on local because once they run out of money, it has to be funded locally. Kids have to eat. And so this is one thing you don't have to worry about. Be in a large district, have in large schools, your cafeterias are able to make money.
The flip side for this is, this is one area we cannot take their money and move it to the general fund. Any profit that gets generated within the school nutrition program by federal law has to stay within the school nutrition fund for the benefit of running that program. So we're not only allowed to take money out of that program and move it to our general fund.
Yeah, you can't take their money. You can charge them indirect cost. And so as long as their cash balance stays healthy, you can collect indirect costs. Basically, their overhead, you know, they don't have their own HR department. They don't pay for electricity. So you charge them indirect costs. That's $700,000 this year. So not only do they not cost you money, they actually provide a benefit in the form of reimbursing you for indirect costs that you cover for their operations. And they can also fund their own equipment purchases. For the last couple of years, they have made significant equipment purchases. You also purchase equipment for them every time you build a new building. So you'll see capital... capital contributions. That's basically when you build a new building and, and, and equipment with all, or equip it with all the cafeteria equipment they need, it, that's funded out of capital. So, so yeah, this, this fund, you can't just raid their twelve and a half million dollars, but again, they can pay their fair share when it comes to indirect costs, and you don't have to kick in, which we have districts that are transferring large dollars and small dollars for smaller districts, but transferring good money from general fund into child nutrition because again, it's, it's difficult to, to feed for four dollars and a half per meal.
All right.
And then as we already looked, the per pupil spending, again, a big increase in local. Your local expenditures went up twenty-five million, state went up seven million, and federal went down ten million. And then finally, the findings in question cost this year, there were none. There was that, there, there was that year in 2023, it was related to budgets, so still in place, good controls over budgeting, especially child nutrition because again, it gets a little bit more difficult when you're looking at all of their revenue sources, the fact that they get free equipment every once in a while when you build them a, a building. So no budget violations across any funds, including child nutrition, and, and no question costs. The other thing now, this, if you are looking at the actual financial statements, I've got a big draft stamped across it. The federal government writes compliance supplements for federal programs, Title I, E.C., child nutrition. They have not finalized their compliance supplements. They're busy doing other things. They're on vacation right now. I cannot date these financial statements until after those compliance supplements are finalized. They have issued drafts. I don't have to do any more testing unless they add a step to Title I, E.C., child nutrition. If, if they come up with a, a new rule that they implemented that they want us to look at and add that, but we do have drafts, we don't have a final version. So the draft statements, all I anticipate changing is the date. Whenever those supplements come out, we'll redate this and I will issue these final reports, submit them to the LGC, the Local Government Commission, send final versions to Phil so that he can send them to you, but that is different this year. At some point, those, those supplements will get finalized and then we can date these, but I don't have any new audit steps. The numbers won't change. Our audit is complete. I'm just waiting for the federal government to, to finalize those supplements.
So explain to me again, if I don't ask this, it's gonna bother me.
Yeah.
Why is the local, why is eleven thousand dollars per student now? You said the local?
Uh, no, that's, that was total. The, the eleven thousand four eighty-two is all spending excluding capital outlay because that fluctuates. It's eleven thousand four eighty-two. When I look at your total expenditures for local, state, and federal divided by your thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-nine students, it's eleven thousand four eighty-two compared to ten thousand eight fifty last year.
Do you know what made it go up or did you?
The, 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 the increase in the local funding, the, the local expenditures going up twenty-five million dollars, part of it from the salary study, part of it from the initiatives that Phil mentioned, just more spending, more local spending.
Are we, we good? I appreciate your time, appreciate the detail, and we'll look forward to seeing the final report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the report section is five point oh four, and it's district support for low-performing schools. And we have Dr. Bowers and Ms. Sarah Reeves to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Good evening to you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Picky. I'm joined here at the podium tonight with, by Ms. Reeves. And certainly it's our pleasure to be able to stand before you tonight and share our support plan for our tiered support model across Cabarrus County Schools. Last week, the State Board of Education met, and when they met, they validated the accountability results from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The preliminary results had been released, but the meeting last week was to officially codify those results, make them part of the archives, and in doing so, they also created this year's designations for low-performing schools. So each and every year, we come before the board and we provide to you what our district support plan will be for our low-performing schools to ensure that they're being resourced and provisioned with the necessary supports in place to be able to drive academic gains and to be able to continue some of the efforts they have taking place at the school level. So tonight's presentation will be just that. We'll be coming back to you again in the month of November to be able to present the low-performing schools' plans for your consideration and approval, and with such, we will have our ability to be able to then complete our reporting to the state, all right? So for many of you who may not have been through this before, this is ground in North Carolina General Statute, so there are some statutory provisions here that will certainly govern the process and all of the reporting requirements from Cabarrus County Schools. But when we really think of this from the standpoint is, we want to kind of ground this again in our continuous improvement school model. This is about supporting all schools and being able to identify ways in which we can tier that support across all schools in Cabarrus County. So when we talk about becoming best in the nation, that is something we are committed to certainly effort and to achieve. And by doing that, we've identified the focus areas for this year from an academic standpoint. Those are going to rely exclusively on foundational literacy, we're going to look exclusively at our continuing to improve our eighth grade math proficiency, our Math One proficiencies, and then ultimately our ACT work keys at the high school level. So again, this meets that framework that we operate under, and it's that continuous improvement cycle. Are we getting better each and every day? And if we, so how do we know? Because if we can't prove it, then it's not happening. So we have to intentionally identify ways in which we're pushing out supports and progress monitoring this each and every week of each and every month of each and every semester of each and every year.
So one of the things that we, we speak a lot about is being really intentional and strategic, and so it is certainly easy to land on the left hand of the graphic with all of the different legislative updates and all of the different factors that change on a day-to-day basis, especially in public education. But where we aim to land is specifically around the focus acts of improvement. And with that being said, part of that lives in the specific area of continuous improvement. So how do we move from school improvement planning being very compliance-driven to being an active part of what we do in a living, breathing entity in our systems and structures every day? And so you, we've shared this to you before, and we'll talk a little bit more about this when we talk about schools that have low-performing schools designation status, but we use data decision rules to drive how we provide supports, but then also how we work with school administration and school staff to be able to support from everything from professional learning communities to how we support with resource allocation to human resources development and supports. And this really just makes sure that we are holding true to not only continuous improvement, but also through our tiered models of support.
So as I previously mentioned, General Statute outlines some of the requirements that districts are to certainly follow when low-performing schools' designations have been approved at the state board level. And for us, that begins here with being able to identify some things that are on a timeline here. So within thirty days of that identification, the first thing that we do is we send communication to our stakeholders. The approval designations happened last week. We were able to then send communication to our families by the end of last week. So by October third, all of our families have been disseminated a letter just outlining what the school itself is going to do to be able to continue to drive those academic gains, to be able to show continuous improvement, what they're going to do to resource, and how they're going to leverage the, the means within their buildings to be able to again show those gains for students as well. Also, within that thirty-day timeline, superintendent or designee is to bring before the board a plan that would certainly be used for supporting these schools throughout their efforts. And then once submitted, then schools will then have a timeline by which they have to post their plans and then allow a period of feedback from the community. So what we do in order to support them with that, our Communications Department, again, under the leadership of Mr. Fur, will be able to use Parent Square to be able to send out to the community a survey in those stakeholders such that they're welcome to provide feedback. And again, the feedback is geared towards the school improvement plan. Sometimes we find stakeholders who want to weigh in on other things, and we believe all feedback is certainly important and should be considered, but for our efforts, we want to really just tease out those things that are intentional about the goals, the strategies, or some of the resources that are being used at the school level, the school improvement plan for, at the school level. And then once that window has certainly had lapsed, we'll be back, as I shared, before the board in November to share not only the plans with you, but to see if you have any questions for us before final approval. So from a district, here are the things to which we are committed to honor and support. The way in which you can read this table, on the left-hand side, what we have, we have a key performance indicator within NC STAR. NC STAR is our school improvement platform. Again, it's nothing more than an instrument, it's not the process, it's not the work, it's just a way in which we're able to capture the work that takes place. So we would have each school provide an indicator. That indicator would say that there is a, a school culture that is, which professional collaboration is utilized. And then on the right-hand side, excuse me, of this table, you will see what are those specific activities that will then take place within that. And these activities will be our human resources team will take an intentional lead and effort in being able to provide what they need at the school level for reporting timelines, evaluations, and also some professional development if needed. And there are our district staff. You can see these are the key activities mentioned there to say, we too will commit ourselves to making sure that we've supported them in the development of their school improvement plans, which later tonight, when we present those, we'll be able to outline for you and show the process with which we have embarked upon and all the work that's taking place. So these are the things which we have committed to do such that the schools do not feel like they have to shoulder the load all on their own.
Additionally, when we're talking about school improvement planning, we're also looking specifically at the NC STAR indicator B one oh one, which talks about supports with the improvement team. This is specifically aligned, and it begins with school improvement planning. So very quickly, what you could end up in a catch-all with is that you set a school improvement goal that is not rigorous enough to get you off of the low-performing list. So there is a lot of intentionality in being able to develop formulaic measures for schools to be able to say, here is the data point, regardless of growth, that you need to reach in order to make sure that you are no longer on this designation list moving into the next year. And so we work very closely with our accountability team to make sure that A, the SMART goals are rigorous enough to be able to remove that, and then our leveled assistant superintendents also provide additional supports. Throughout the course of the year, we're working intentionally in doing school walkthroughs and visits specifically after each of the benchmarks. As you know, that there are three for elementary and middle, and we're walking classrooms, having dialogue with school leaders around what supports they need, what coaching, professional development, curricular resources they may need, and then where are they tracking in terms of based on Benchmark One, Two, and Three, because we know the proficiency gain obviously is incremental. You're not going to increase fifteen percent proficiency overnight, but ideally, we're specifically targeting groups of students that might be on that bubble or that threshold, and what are we doing to make sure we're moving them to proficiency so that this designation status no longer exists for the school? Last but not least, obviously, when we're talking about intentional improvement, we're providing tailored professional development in the areas of foundational literacy, eighth grade math, Math One, ACT, and work keys. But there may be certain instances, very candidly, for certain schools that science might have been the reason that their proficiency took a, a back step, so to speak, and they ended up with a low-performing schools designation status. So we're customizing and tailoring our professional development and support specifically based on individual needs with the schools, but also having ongoing dialogue with our school leaders because we do this partnership in a joint effort to make sure there are a lot of factors that come into play when we're talking about student data and performance. So obviously, all that we're doing is having, engaging in dialogue and then talking about the data metrics that they need to land on at each point in the year to be able to get them there so that ideally, by the end of the year, that designation status is removed. So as we talked about specifically what district staff do, I spoke to a lot of this already, but really, it's the PLC support and the PLC structures are probably one of the most powerful ways that we can be able to support student achievement, but also that guaranteed experience for all students. We have six school visits during the first semester to support school leaders with walkthroughs. This is actually concluding after our first round of benchmarks, which we actually are in the process of wrapping up right now, so we'll have some really good preliminary data to know, based on a baseline, where are we seeing us going specifically in the areas of math, reading, and science? There may also be additional professional developments that the school leader asks for, so this could be based on student achievement data, this could be based on walkthrough feedback or observation feedback that the principal is seeing, and they're asking for different levels of support. And then obviously, we're working one-on-one to make sure that the schools submit their comprehensive reports in NC STAR.
So this to give you a visual on the timeline, sort of the roadmap, if you will. Again, as I mentioned, last Thursday, I believe it was, state board met and at that time did validate the results, and then the low-performing school designation lists were released. And so you can see the journey and the milestones each and every way along the way, up until when we come back to you on November the third, for the plans themselves from the schools that will then have had some community feedback taken into consideration when appropriate, and then obviously, any other additional revisions that might be warranted, given some of the things they may want to do that would be, again, additional measures to certainly deploy. Several of those measures will be adding, seeding these key indicators within their plan, so that will take place beginning tomorrow. And then again, they'll have a chance to review the community will, the plans during the feedback window. So with that, we'll certainly pause for any questions you may have.
Did we define low-performing school? Pardon? Did we define what a low-performing school is?
Good question, sir. Sorry, we sometimes make that assumption, and that is not always a great way to operate. So a low-performing school is any school that has been designated by the state as achieving a school performance grade of D or F in either met or did not meet growth. And currently, we have five schools this past academic, last past academic year that would have fallen within that categorical identification.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Good question. Thank you.
I'll keep with Pam and Greg.
Thanks so much. This might be a communications question, but when you're communicating with, in this window right now, is that solely through Parent Square or are you actually doing old-school letters? And will people go to Engage or like where, where can they, or do they email their principal? What's the communication?
Great question. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Fur for that and just to make sure I don't say anything that's inaccurate.
I'm not sure about the letters.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
They've already received the letters, but in terms of school improvement feedback, we have used the website in Parent Square in the past.
Yes, so the actual survey form will be on Engage with CCS page. The directive to parents to visit that page will then, we'll go through Parent Square.
As far as your communication, both, schools have the means to be able to send both a hard copy of the letter and electronic version of it as well, so that we able to reach the greatest number of stakeholders.
Thank you, Pam. Greg?
Um, this may be a dumb question, but slide six, what is a super observation?
We're gonna let HR explain that one.
Great question. Good evening. So super observations are designed for principals to be able to catch teachers who are not performing at a proficient level early enough to do, to intervene and help that teacher improve or, per North Carolina legislation, help that teacher exit if necessary. Again, for, ultimately, what happens in those schools is all teachers move to a cycle of full observations rather than full and abbreviated observations. And what that means is that principals look at each of the standards on each observation they complete with the teachers three times per year. So every teacher in that school moves to a cycle of observations where principals are in the classrooms more often, looking for all of the standards and intervening early if they find a teacher who is not proficient.
Thank you. Then also slides, slide six and seven.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Yes. I'm just asking a follow-up before you sit down.
Of course.
To be clear, there are amazing teachers in some of these schools.
Amazing teachers.
Right, so they might have to go through more observations, but they're not coming to you.
They are not. No, so that's, it's a great question. So again, the, the premise of the legislation is to catch any problems that might be there so that the principal can intervene. And in our district, our goal is always to help folks get better. Now, there are phenomenal teachers in those buildings doing phenomenal work, and those observations are going to allow the principals to document that phenomenal work in the observation system. Great question.
Back to you, Greg.
Sure. So slides six and seven show us the NC STAR dimensions and descriptions actions.
Yes, sir.
And so I pulled up last year's presentation, those are exactly the same.
They are, they are.
So are we doing anything different this year with these schools?
These are part of the district's support models that we These are part of the district's support models that we have in place, and when we find that there are certain provisions in NC STAR that we're going to be able to leverage for the schools, some of the things which the LEA must offer are these particular indicators. So, a lot of it is driven by some of the, some of the oversight and some of the actual guidance we get from the state.
Okay. So, and then, when we go down to Slide, Slide 8, is this, this was not in last year's report. So, is this new? Has this changed?
Yes, sir. So, once again, each and every year, we learn some of the scaffolded supports we want to put in place, and some of the things we want to extend, to which we've said, hey, we've seen experience with this, and we've seen some results in other locales, and that's where our academics team, our human resources department, our student services division, our account, it is really a multi-departmental effort. They're able to come together to plan and say, here's what we believe will serve these schools and give them an additional resource so that they can leverage.
Okay. And so, where the rubber meets the road on this stuff, I'll see that when I go and look at the school improvement plans later, because these are all rolled into the same package.
That is, yes, sir, that is correct. So, what you'll find is those indicators will be added, and then there will be certain measures, as you said, that will mirror some of the descriptors that you saw on Slides 6 and 7.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Great question. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody on this? Sam?
The six classroom or school visits and the walkthroughs, are those pre-announced?
Yes, we work with our school administration to announce it. I can't speak to the fact that every school administrator lets the teachers know, but for the most part...
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, but our school leaders are very much aware of them, and they help us to make sure that we're actually scheduling those walkthroughs at a time that is good for them. So, for example, if there are focus areas in eighth grade math, if we show up at a time that they're not teaching eighth grade math, that's not going to be helpful to the school.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. We look forward to next month, you'll be bringing the plans to us.
Thank you very much.
And Dr. Powers, I guess you're still here, right?
Yes. Don't change the channel. I'm still here.
Wear a different hat. So, 5.05 is the Coltrane Web STEM Boundary Process Update. Again, as, was told to us earlier, the schools on schedule to open in June, or, June, or finished in June, June, so this will be for next school year, right?
I believe that's an August timeline.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, good evening again, all. This is just to provide you with an update on the work that has taken place thus far with the Coltrane Web STEM Elementary School Boundary Project. Last time we met, during the month of September, we were able to give the board an overview of the timeline, the process, and really what we were looking at for the overall project itself. This presentation tonight, I will go ahead and forewarn you, does have a lot of data included in it and a lot of tables. For the sake of the presentation itself, I will certainly not read each table. I want to let those members of the community know that we will certainly put this not only on our school's website, or, excuse me, our district's website, it'll be on our Engage page, and certainly, you'll be able to find it within Board Docs as well. So, there'll be multiple opportunities for individuals to go in after tonight's presentation and take a deeper dive into something that maybe have interested them. But for our viewing audience and for certainly our community, we wanted to be able to bring them an update on what's taking place, just so we're able to have a touch point each and every month and keep them informed and keep them abreast of the work that's certainly taking place behind the scenes. This slide here just gives you an overview of what to be expected within this presentation. So, you can see here, we've got various project objectives that are to be met, everything from background information, the project itself, to the data that's going to be making up the, some of the boundary scenarios and options that are developed, to feedback from the community, to student population trends, and then ultimately, what our guiding criteria will be for the boundary work. So, once again, when we think about those boundary criteria, you can see here identified once again, these will be those key, four key performing indicators that will certainly lead any scenario development. And as we go through each and every scenario along the way, what we'll start to explore is the capacity and utilization of that particular scenario, what does it do for the feeder patterns that are certainly impacted underneath that scenario's option? When we start thinking about this from a proximity and how far our students have to travel, and then ultimately, the demographics of the school. So, we'll be able to get these indicators for each and every scenario, and then match that back against some district averages to say, okay, are we moving closer or farther away from district averages on each of these? Keep in mind, just given some of the challenges of any boundary work, it's very difficult to get two district averages, as much if we sometimes would love to across the board, but the effort of the team is to make sure that the schools are represented, the communities that they serve, and then in doing so, have we properly identified any potential challenges moving forward? And are we resourcing and provisioning those schools to be able to tackle those challenges? So, the first thing that I'll share with you tonight is the feedback from the three stakeholder groups, and I'm going to put all three here side by side by side. So, we had an opportunity to survey the board, the members of the internal review team, and our community. Again, just to remind the board, there was a communication or at least a survey sent to the families of several schools that were on the identified focus area. That would be the current families of Coltrane Web STEM Elementary. That would be Irvin Elementary School. That would be families at Royal Oaks, Wyancroft Elementary School, and Weddington Hills Elementary School. Early on, we had identified those areas as a part of the focus area because they border the existing Coltrane Web school boundary in some way or another, with the exception being Royal Oaks. But Royal Oaks is close enough in proximity that we did feel as if just getting them some feedback would be helpful. So, you can see the collection that we have from the three different stakeholder groups and what are some of the key insights. Across all three groups, you see communication there being a key theme. So, that is certainly something important we want to make sure we deliver, we honor, and we are certainly committed to providing that so to ensure that as best as possible, there is an opportunity to have some two-way dialogue back and forth, not only from the district, but for those that might be potentially be impacted by a boundary recommendation. And then, you start to see some variances that are included in each of the actual stakeholder groups as well as to what might be leading priorities. And so, each of these will be considered as we move through the project, and as best as possible, when possible, making sure that we honor the collective here and certainly take these in consideration when scenarios are developed. You can see here, once again, we also asked each stakeholder group what they have prioritized when it came to the actual framework criteria or guiding criteria of the project itself. And across each of the stakeholder groups, you can see that there was just different rank order as to what the stakeholder group placed as most important. That was to be expected. This gives us the sense that through different lenses, there will be different ideas as to what should be the greatest consideration. And in doing that, that's why it's important to look at all of the criteria holistically, not necessarily independently or prioritize one, because when we don't do so holistically, what we're able to do is provide what would be the best possible option for students and families. And so, really, that's an exercise to say, these will be looked at, again, across the board for each, and we'll certainly make a deliberate attempt to not de-emphasize any one of them over the others. So, some of the boundary planning factors. When we look at this, number one, is the area of focus. We want to make sure our community understands, area of focus doesn't necessarily mean that you will be included. It just gives us a starting point to say, the touch points around the current Coltrane Web STEM Elementary Boundary are more than likely going to be those areas that draw some considerable attention. So, you can see for this map, the current boundary for Coltrane Web STEM is in the highlighted yellow area. And then, we've actually applied the schools that are in the adjacent boundary, so you can see where they are located in proximity to the current Coltrane Web STEM Boundary. Ultimately, the placement, replacement school will end up serving the downtown Concord area, but it's really that northern portion. It'll include some neighborhoods that were certainly included in the former Beverly Hills Elementary School Boundary as well. Obviously, because of the proximity, it's only natural to certainly reason that there would be some boundary options and scenarios that would have those neighborhood, that neighborhood included. The R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School was intentionally left off this particular area of focus. That area was re-boundary during the last realignment. We understand that that school grew from just shy of 300 to now over 700 students. So, again, has gone through a little bit of a realignment recently itself. So, that was one that was intentionally for this project not identified. And so, just looking at the boundary, anything south of Corbin Street would not necessarily be up for consideration for this project moving forward. Here, you see what is the map of the former Beverly Hills Elementary School Boundary. And that area is in the hatched area, okay? It's identified in red, but also the gridded area is probably the best way to put it. So, that gives us a sense of where the former boundary, when you overlay it with the current boundaries, would lie. And you can see there are students from the boundary that once was the former Beverly Hills that now attend Royal Oaks, students that now attend Wyancroft, and students that now attend Irvin Elementary School. So, that was kind of the redistribution then at the time. So, as we go through this effort, we will certainly want to make sure that we are cognizant of that particular boundary, or those students who had attended Beverly Hills, and also too, the commitment that was made that there would be an opportunity to attend the new STEM, Coltrane Web STEM Elementary School for students that would, would be outside that boundary or had attended Beverly Hills. So, that's something that we will certainly remain committed to serving and fulfilling. You see here, we start to get into some seat breakdowns with what might be some of the makeup. So, again, the school is built for what will be 756 students, that is 100% utilization. But as we start to look at the breakdown of the student population, it's important to note that we do have what would be pre-K classroom within this school itself. So, 18 of those seats would be reserved for pre-K students, and that's intentional on the front end, and our construction team goes through this effort to make sure that that's part of the planning process. We also want to make sure that we recognize the need to be able to serve our EC students and how important it is to have specialized setting classrooms. So, that number has been taken into consideration too. So, these 20 seats would be for specialized setting, if you will, which is part of many of our school communities. And so, we see these programs in place everywhere, and we want to make sure we're intentional about giving appropriate space and appropriate space that is resourced to be able to serve students. Then you can see there, the next figure is that, that leaves us about 718 K-5 seats, roughly, that we would be aiming to fill. Now, the current Coltrane Web STEM Boundary has 289 students residing within. So, that automatically starts to eat away at some of the 718 seats we would look to fill. We also have what will be the legacy students from the former Beverly Hills that we will want to identify through each scenario option, and that will start to factor into the student enrollment piece. And then, we also have what would be current magnet seats, which is 102. So, if you just take what we know right now and deduct that from what those 718 seats would be, we're looking at just over 320, 20 students, give or take, that we anticipate being somewhat considered for each of the boundary scenarios and for the realignment project itself. So, these are the factors that'll go into the boundary planning efforts. So, what we've done is we've tried to start with a basic planning element here. These are planning blocks. And simply put, a planning block is just a defined geographic area in its simplest form, which can say, there are natural boundaries that create this commonality for grouping of students. And then, how many students lie within that common boundary? These are most notably neighborhoods. And a lot of times, those neighborhoods are defined by street networks or natural boundaries, such as rivers, creeks, and streams, or by man-made boundaries, railroads, you know, large divides and tracts of land that are separated by power lines and things like that. We've all seen those. So, this really kind of gives us a sense of where students are in these areas under investigation, and how many would comprise each of the planning blocks. And then, we would then use that when we start to develop some scenario options to know exactly how many students will be included with each and every configuration, if you So, these next few tables are going to give us a sense of what has been the historical enrollment data for each of the schools under consideration. And so, we went back, we mapped roughly within, at last, eight years or so, and we wanted to see what have been those trends. And we look, when we look at trends within schools, we want to look at two different types of trends. One would be the enrollment trend, which essentially are the students that are attending the school each and every year, but it takes into consideration things such as students that are transferring in and transferring out of that school for various reasons. The other consideration we want to look at is the boundary population. Those would be the students that are living within a defined boundary. So, to consider that as your base population to operate. And you can see with these tables, the two are not always synonymous. So, many times, what we have is we'll have cases where our enrollment may be higher than the boundary population. And sometimes, in rare cases, you may see the inverse of that due to transfer-in, transfer-out factors as well. But it gives us a sense on what has happened historically with a school and what are we seeing play out? The table down at the bottom then gives you the relative transfer-in, transfer-outs. And so, one thing that's noteworthy there for Coltrane Web STEM Elementary is you can see in the '24, '25 school year, the number of transfer-ins dropped significantly. It's worth noting, the school moved into a smaller facility, and that was mostly due to the fact that while the current school is being built, we did have to identify a swing school, and the swing school was just a much smaller facility itself and didn't have quite the same capacity. So, that did necessitate some changes for the, for the moment. But, again, you get a sense on the transfers and then the transfer-outs, and then that net differential would certainly be added to the student enrollment numbers in the above table. We also apply that same methodology for WM Irvin. So, once again, you can see the top table there gives you the sense of what would be the enrollment for the last eight years. Then below that, you're going to see the transfer-in, transfer-out, excuse me, the boundary population. And then, you see the graphic at the bottom that gives you the transfer-in, transfer-out historically for Irvin. Of note here, the last two years for Irvin, we're starting to see a net gain when we look at the transfer-in, transfer-out. So, in terms of students transferring in, they offset the number of students transferring out, and we're seeing a positive gain there. When we look at this now for what would be Weddington Hills Elementary School, same thing again. Historically, the boundary has, the enrollment and the boundary have had a very healthy group of students and a population from which to pull. And you can see here what that transfer-in, transfer-out history has been. And then, Wyancroft Elementary School, which more or less, for the last two years, has had just kind of a same transfer-in, transfer-out in terms of its enrollment. And then, Royal Oaks, you can see here, a great differential between the transfer-in, transfer-out at Royal Oaks, primarily because it does have a larger magnet base that it serves with is, with it being the performing arts magnet for, for Cabarrus County Schools. So, the next thing we'll take, that we'll present that we've been able to at least create a baseline for are what are the current conditions in place, if you will, for each of the guiding criteria for the school boundaries that are under focus? And so, what we've done, we've looked at utilization. We've now gone to look at what would be the proximity. We're going to look at the demographics, and we're going to look at the feeder networks that are currently, currently in practice now. So, the last few slides you looked at, kind of went back and looked historically as to what happened, is happening. This table here gives you the, what might we anticipate based off of those trends and based on some of the models that we've developed that would give us a sense on what future projections would be? And for projections, we do year-over-year projections, and we're always updating and evaluating these. We don't set it and forget it. This is an annual process, and so, each and every year, we do come back and we're constantly reviewing based on what are the current conditions within the community, what's happening with development, what's happening with trends, with transfer-in, transfer-out, all these data points that I've just spoke of, previously referenced, come into play. This table looks at what is the five-year and 10-year projection for each of the schools under the focus area, and what is the anticipated utilization of the schools? And so, green is good, red is very cautionary there. Red, quite honestly, puts some additional stressors on buildings. I'll be quite honest with you, it does present challenges. That yellowish color that you see there presents a little bit more of a caution, and blue means it's underutilized. So, both overutilization and underutilization are areas that we want to certainly steer away from, because that means that schools are not necessarily being used as they were built to be used. This gives us current feeder patterns in place. So, again, three of our elementary schools have 100% of their students that are moving to the next, our elementary schools moving to the next middle school in sequence. And you can see here, those schools will be 100% of fifth graders from Rosa would go to Concord Middle, 100% of Coltrane Web would certainly go to Concord Middle, and then 100% of Weddington Hills currently would go to Lincoln Middle School. And then, we have two split elementary or split feeder patterns among the elementary schools within this current focus area as well. So, that just gives us an idea of the current state, because obviously, with boundaries, when we start looking at those, that might impact some of the feeder networks that are in play for students as they particulate through the grade levels. This gives you a lit, idea of the proximity. And so, the way in which this is best read is the top-left table there, that graphic gives you a sense of each of the elementary schools in the focus area. And then, their average distance that students travel to get, elementary school students travel to get to the elementary school itself. So, for Coltrane Web, that number will be almost seven tenths of a mile. On average, students travel. You can see there, there is a dotted line that runs through and almost bisects that graph. graph. That's the average distance traveled for elementary-age students across the district. So on average, elementary school students were traveling, say, two and a half miles to get to their elementary school. So we want to evaluate each of these against district averages when scenarios are developed and as we go through each and every boundary option. Gives us a sense, are we getting closer to or farther from the district average in many cases? The map on the right gives you a sense of the distribution. And one thing I will point out that's down at the bottom, 90% of the students, elementary-age students across Combaris County Schools either attend the closest or second closest elementary school to their home. And that's certainly something for us to keep in mind as we go through this effort as well. Proximity does play a factor. And certainly, we heard that in from the community voice from the families as well. You can see there, just looking at this from a standpoint of proximity, that red circle or that circled area will more than likely give us a sense of what would be the area that really would be the focal point once we start developing on some options and considerations. Demographics, there are going to be several components of demographics we're going to review. One is going to be the median household income, another will be educational attainment for families, and then another one is going to be the percent of students that are identified as multilingual learners. So we look at the average median, or excuse me, the average median household income for each of the schools that are in the focus area, you can see that those averages have been listed. And then down at the bottom, that then is compared against what is the district average for elementary school-age children. And you can see those ranges vary from just south of $58,000 to just over $82,000. So the distribution there certainly gives you a sense of the areas that we have. The map that is adjacent to it, you can see that, we've kind of identified those based on different planning areas as well, and certainly different areas that we would use for boundary consideration. Within that, the darker shades would be areas that higher average median household incomes, and then the lighter shades will be areas with lower average median household incomes. Educational attainment. For this exercise, what we were able to certainly map would be plotting educational attainment on a scale of one to seven. We've included the scale on this graphic as well, so people have an idea as to what that correlates to. But essentially, for every household to which the, there was an elementary-age student enrolled, we were able to then assign a point value to that. If the family, no one had a high school diploma within the home, it was a point value of one that was assigned. If there was a high school diploma that had been attained, a point value of two. Point value of three with some work or some college after high school, and then a point value of four would be an associate's degree. And then you see five, six, and seven, and what those would indicate. So here, on average, the average educational student attainment for K-5 families across Combaris County Schools will be 3.87. That is just shy of an associate's degree if we were to compare it to a degree earned. And so once again, you can see the distribution there for the schools that are under consideration as well. Multilingual learners, again, these are certain students that are served with a multilingual identified status within the school itself. They do qualify for additional services as well that are provided by the district. But it also gives us a sense of the demands and some of the challenges that schools face as well. It's a measure for us to certainly pull in and look at. And you can see there, the distribution and the percentages that are currently being served at each of the schools. The district average is on average for elementary schools, about 11.6% of the student makeup would be multilingual learners within any average elementary school across the district. And you can see here, the range goes from 6.4% to up to 28.7%. And then also wanted to introduce this as well. One of the things we are making an intentional effort to monitor and to certainly be aware of were the former Beverly Hills Elementary School students and where they might be now. This map highlights where students who attended Beverly Hills Elementary School in the 23, 24 school year and where they're currently located. So those would be students that at the time, before they were redistricted, were within grades kindergarten, first, or second grade. And so we're able to then see exactly what schools they're attending now and also what grade level they would be in. And that gives you the distribution as well. So as we go through each and every boundary option, inherently, there will be some students that attended Beverly Hills Elementary School that would be included in some boundary scenarios and boundary options for the Coltrane Web STEM Elementary. And there would be some that would be outside of the boundary. And those outside of the boundary, we certainly will be mindful of because, again, should they elect to have the opportunity to return to the new replacement school, then again, we will make sure we honor that and we're able to identify those students. We have actually sent an intent-to-attend form to each of these families. So 136 students have been identified that were former Beverly Hills Elementary School students at the time in which, in 23, 24. And we have now sent an actual intent survey to them to gauge their interest in returning to the replacement school. The window for that participation closes on Friday. It's been open now for about, this will be third week of it, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Fur. Yeah, it's about three weeks in, and we were fielding those returns, and we'll be able to certainly process that and analyze that such that we have an idea of what the interest might be. This is our project timeline. Once again, we've had several meetings with the internal review team. Here we are again. You can see the red line that goes down or the line, the vertical line, and it certainly is creating a bit of a separator there on the calendar. Month of October here, we are sharing with the board. We do have another community meeting, as Dr. Kapicki shared at the outset tonight, scheduled for November the 12th at Arbrown McAllister, to be able to inform the community on our updates, where do we stand, and give them a little bit more of an opportunity to ask some questions and see some of the work that the team has been able to complete thus far at that time. We would be bringing recommendation to the board in the month of November. And we would certainly ask that the board, with that recommendation, be positioned to have both public comment and what would be an approval of a boundary in the month of You can see here, we are pushing everything through our Engage with CCS website. We would certainly encourage our schools to do the same. If individuals reach out with questions about the boundary process or the boundary project or what's taking place, this is the best platform for us to be able to interact with them and to be able to channel that communication back to. We certainly don't want to put schools in the position where they haven't had to answer questions, which they just, quite honestly, may not have the information. But we find we're better positioned to be able to provide that support to our families and community members and do so consistently so that, quite honestly, we're able to give the same answer to others when they ask it. I will pause for any questions that you may have, and I know that it was a lot, so I do apologize.
Okay, board members. Pam?
Thank you so much. I appreciate data, and you did, that's a lot, a lot of maps. So the community meeting, I thought, was really well done as well. And we got a lot of feedback from that. Not a ton of people attended, but it was, it was attended. And the best part of it for me was that there were four-year-old parents in the room. And so that is my biggest concern right now, is I appreciate Engage with CCS, I appreciate Parent Square, but the reality is, is that we have families that are going to be affected that have no idea because they don't interact with us right now. So we, we did do some outreach for, I think those parents were in the downtown Concord area.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything that we can do? And I would go to slide 20. On slide 20, if you live in that oval and your neighbors, you know your neighbors, I would just encourage people to tell people that you could be affected. Because I just, I really hope that that November meeting is more, like, there's a lot more people attending that because if you're affected, especially if you're a four-year-old parent, you're trying to make plans for school year next year. You could be going to a new school, brand-new school. So there's that. And then I just, I guess the actual question that I have, besides just talking, is how was the survey? I really like the way you broke it down as far as priorities and understanding that. I appreciate that parents say proximity matters. We hear that. But how, was it better than the community meeting? Like, how many people participated?
Great question. So we had 79 students or 79 families participate in the survey and provide us some feedback. So again, I can't comment on statistically significance of that, but that was enough to be able to give us a large enough sample size by which we felt confident that this is representative of what the families may want. We're actually going to share those results on our Engage page as well so that individuals can then see, hey, these were the things that were identified as being most important. What I will share though, too, and thank you again for that point about the students yet to be enrolled in school, we will partner with the City of Concord again prior to the next November 12th meeting. And with each of our boundary scenarios that we are leaning towards or perhaps considering, we'll be able to provide the city with a clearly delineated outlier and say, we'd like to have you send a communication to families that lie between this street to the west, to this street to the south, and box it in, such that we, again, increase the likelihood that we can get as many individuals out there as possible. We'll also continue to push this out with our schools. And so our hope is that when people start to see the boundary considerations, that might give them more of the impetus to say, hey, listen, let me now attend and certainly weigh in on some of this.
Thank you, Pam.
Just real quick, the Beverly Hills students that can opt back into Coltrane Web, how are they being notified, those families?
So we have sent a Parent Square communication to those families because they are still enrolled with us. So we've identified any student that would still be enrolled with us in that process.
Do we have any idea if the response rates are indicating that that is getting through?
Forty as of now of the 136.
Okay. Would we back that up with like a written letter? I guess with a week left, we're not much opportunity to add other methods of communicating with those parents.
No, sir. I think what we try to consider is, there just may be some, and again, this is an assumption that they're just not going to participate no matter what we send, quite honestly. If we could get a third of those families responding, 30%, we would take as a good response rate on that. We don't have a written letter prepped and prepared to ask them because to do so, then they, I guess, then we've got to feel the written letter coming back in. We can sort of look at it.
And like I said, your timeframe's kind of tight on that. I just want to make sure that all those messages were received.
Yeah, and Mr. Fur can track that through Parent Square. Yes, sir. And that's, thank you, that's one of the things. Mr. Fur was able to track that through Parent Square and find which of those were delivered and which of those were read. And so we have that available. And what we do find when we do some of the planning meetings is that information was sent, it was received, it's just individuals choose not to respond.
Dr. Kapicki, do you want to respond?
Yeah, they're good questions. I just want to remind the board, the responses surveyed, well, you know, there's no perfect answer here in terms of, did we reach everybody? Anything over 30% historically research-wise is a good return rate. You get to the 40% to 50%, you're looking at excellent returns, and above that would be exceptional. So what I'm trying to say is, we had a good response rate that would be something that could be dependent upon. I think the community meetings, having a couple of those, is another reach out to the communities to make sure that they're aware. The Parent Square notifications have been helpful. I think we will, obviously, it's been our website, this presentation this evening, making the public aware of what is taking place. We will continue to reach out to families and working with Dr. Bowers and Francis Lane to identify the families and the impact, affected boundaries when we finally do make the recommendation to the board and decide. We'll make sure that we communicate to all families that are impacted. So I just want to assure the board that we're keenly aware of the communication aspects of, and watching, monitoring all the things we're doing to make sure that we're identifying the right areas and the right families, especially our newcomers, our four-year-olds that are coming into the system as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on my left? Sam?
So I'm working by memory without a net, but I think it was 756 was capacity, 718 after you pull out special needs, pre-K, that kind of thing. Is there a target percentage? We don't want to, we don't want to open with 718.
Great point. Yes, sir. So again, when you're looking at optimal utilization of a school from industry standards, 80 to 100% is where you want to always be able to operate. With this particular project, we do not want to exceed 90% when possible. Yes, sir, that is correct. 100% would be less than ideal.
Right. Yeah, I can only agree. The Rosa projections, because of the unique nature of that school, it seemed like it would be hard to project. It seemed harder to project the population or the enrollment of those. Would that be a fair?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's more variables.
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last thing, the chart about the distance, I just now, while you were talking, is that to the new Coltrane or where they are now?
Where they are now.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as Sam was saying, we're talking maximum 300 kids involved in this district. Probably less than that.
That is correct.
If you want to keep yourself flexible to add more magnet seats.
And grow into a new.
It's not a huge, you know, just like we said, there are a few, especially if you live closer to the school, you should consider that you might be impacted, but it's not going to be a huge number as we had in the past.
You're correct.
Okay. Are we all good? We're looking, so next month, there should be some recommendations coming to us. That's the plan, right?
We'll give you an update on the work that has taken place next month, and then the recommendation will take place in November. The board will have an opportunity to review those prior to any discussion with the community.
Okay. But the community, to pay attention next month because those will be the recommended boundaries for that.
Yes, sir, that is correct. And we are trending towards being prepared to share those at the November 12th meeting as well.
Okay, and again, that's for next school year.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Starting in August.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, do we want to take a short break before we get into our items? Or continue? That's what? Okay, sure. All right, you just make a motion when you want to break. All right, we will move on. These are items for consent or action for next week. So these are items, if we are all in agreement, we can put them on a consent agenda or we can ask them to be placed on action if we want more information or if we want public input. So the first item here is 6.01, our policies for first read and welcome. Dr. Sandy Ward.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Kapicki, Ms. Little, and our viewing audience. We have a full slate of policies. That means our policy committee was super busy, which we like. So I have not received any questions, so I'll go right into a review, if that's okay. All right. If we can go into 7340, employee dress and appearance. This one had a minor technical edit down at the legal reference. So there was nothing significant there and no changes, all the way down to the end. Yep. Keep going. It was, yeah, it's going to be in blue. Go up, up, I mean, down? To the references at the bottom of the page. Keep going. There you go. We added that in. Okay, there you go. So there's a new reference to this court case. Any questions? All right, thank you. We're going to go to 9210, care and maintenance of grounds and outdoor equipment, which is another technical edit, where we fixed a cross-reference. So if you want to scroll down to the bottom where the references are. All right, there, there you go. So here, we have changed the name of our policy from student safety to school safety. And we've also fixed a cross-reference in that particular policy. Okay. All right. The next one, we have 2302, which is a spring PLS update, remote participation in board meetings. This was a required change for us, and this clarifies that votes in a remote meeting during a state-declared emergency will be taken by roll call, which really makes sense. And that came from the General Statute 166A-19. Okay. Any questions? All right. 2342 is along the same lines, voting methods, also in spring 25, clarifies that votes in a remote meeting during a state-declared emergency will be taken by roll call. So this is also required, and we also updated a legal reference there.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Sorry, Sam.
I just wanted, in regards to those two policies, a part of that is that there's a change, we can't just call a meeting to be emergent anymore. That there is, that the whole idea of what is considered an emergency is more state-mandated than at the local level.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Our next policy, 3225-4312-7320, technology responsible use, which also came from the spring PLS. We added language in subsection B1. The language added to this policy is tended to address requirements for school systems using E-rate support for off-premises Wi-Fi hotspots and services, which really just talks about who is supposed to be using our school-funded Chromebooks and technology. Okay. All right. Our next one is 1310-4002, parental involvement, summer 20, spring 2025. You've seen those one about four times, and it is coming up in the next round. Wish I would have waited, but we just got it today. This one, it's required. We add language in section D from the new state law regarding school trips. Talks about sleeping quarters and things. Talks about sleeping quarters and things of that nature.
Greg? Several of us intended lead training with the School Board Association a couple of weeks ago, um, and this policy was brought up, and, and you correct me and Mr. Treadway can correct me if I'm wrong, when we talked about this particular policy, there was some extra language that said that we could create an exemption where boys and girls could share sleeping quarters if all the parents agreed.
Correct.
And we kind of said, well, we don't want boys and girls to share sleeping quarters, so we just took that, take that exemption off.
Correct.
So, to tie it back, based on that conversation with the School Boards Association and, and my own recollection, when I was in high school, Central Colbert's marching band went to band nationals in Indianapolis, and we had to stay in a armory. And so, it was a big room with boys on one side of the room and girls on the other side of the room, and I'm not sure if that constitutes shared sleeping quarters where we would need to have parental permission, and maybe that's why that exemption was in place. That seemed to be what the School Board Association was applying, implying to us that day.
So, we have not received anything, but what, like you said, what the policy committee says is when students are staying overnight in hotel rooms where there's confined spaces, we, we certainly do not want to be a part of that.
Right.
And so, we've asked, um, our attorney for his feedback and if he would be comfortable with us not even going that route.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that the definition of sleeping quarters isn't, isn't defined here.
Isn't defined, yeah, yeah.
So, we would all agree, we wouldn't want them to share a hotel room. But maybe a gymnasium with chaperones down the middle.
Correct.
And we all say this is a sort of common thing that sometimes happens, is a lock-in. Uh, maybe we would authorize that and maybe that, that exemption needs to be in place to allow that.
So, would you like to bring that back to policy?
I'm asking for, you know, what do you guys think? Like, is that, does that sound right? Mr. Eisenhower?
William? Sure, so, yeah, just so. For everybody's benefit, in thirteen, the way it was originally written in the policy committee, um, it, it included an additional provision that, um, students could be allowed to share sleeping quarters with members of the other biological sex if the parents consented. And we took that out to kind of just take away that discretion such that right now you can only do it if you're a member of the immediate family. So, I think what Mr. Mills is saying is maybe there was a good reason for having that, um, parental consent right. Um, so, yeah, that, i- if we wanted to do that, obviously, we, we could add that provision back in.
In your analysis, would a gymnasium subdivided in that way constitute shared sleeping quarters or would those be separate sleeping quarters?
I, I would not call that shared sleeping quarters. I mean, I think this is what this intended for, you're, you're right, though, it's not defined, but I, I would take this to be some confined place like a hotel room, um, or something like that, not, um, a gymnasium, um.
Okay, Dr. Kapicki?
I concur with you, Mr. Eisenhower, I still would be uncomfortable with this language. I think it'd probably be best to bring us back to the policy committee. It's not going to hurt to review it and, uh, maybe put some of those, some thought into, to reward in this. Well, I understand that, I, I understand a gym is a large space, that there is potential there for a shared space, so I, I would not be comfortable without putting some more delineation to the policy to say exactly what we're talking about here so that we don't get ourselves in any kind of legal situation. So, I, I would, I would say we bring this back to policy just to just have that conversation.
Uh, I think that's certainly fine, I mean, there are new updates on this from the fall anyway, so we might as well roll all the updates into it at the same time.
I need consensus from our board to do that. Pam?
I would just say, I, I mean, I support it going back, um, clarity is always better. I guess my question is, is that example was a long time ago, no offense, but, so, I just, I'm just curious of how, like, how relevant it would be today? Like, I know your committee's made up of teachers and principals and, and things like that, so I just would be curious if, um, our kids are ever, um, in a situation like that anymore.
Adam, do you want to weigh in on that?
And or?
No.
I mean, band stuff could happen where they go take these long trips for, sometimes, if we didn't do it, I know there's talks about, and, and, I don't know.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
And I was going to ask Ms. Blessington, she's the Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools, if she knows their trips.
Anna? Anything?
Usually, um, in hotel rooms is where they go, DC and Charleston. I don't know of any, um, field trip where they're sharing an open space, or there might be cabins at certain camps during the summer, too.
I think the School Boards Association, somebody in that meeting, their example was they have an elementary school that has a sleep-in, like a lock-in where they have a guest speaker comes in and talks to the kids overnight, and then they all sleep in the library. And I thought, well, that's easy enough to split those kids off into adjacent classrooms. But again, it's a sort of another example of why that exemption might need to be.
Right, I don't know of any example that currently happens like that at all, it'd be like separate cabins or hotel rooms, but if you, I mean, if you want to be thorough, you can go back to the policy committee and be thorough. So, it wouldn't happen.
And Sam, you wanted to weigh in?
I did, I just want to say, uh, as a former principal, I love the language we have right now. I don't think, uh, anyway, um, I guess I'm thinking of what could possibly go wrong. A lot. And I like the language we have now. I don't have a problem sending it back to the policy committee, but there was a yeasty conversation about this and I think the group was, felt good about the language that we have now, but, uh, I, I defer to the wisdom of the group.
Okay, board members, are we okay sending this back to have another look? Okay, so we'll, we'll move that one, take that one off, uh, that'll go back to the policy committee.
Thank you.
And we got two more here to cover for the first three.
Okay, sure. Um, and so, the next one is school field trips, which has the very same, uh, language. So, if we, we can take those two back, is that what we're saying?
If it's the same language, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, then, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about discretionary admission, which is forty-one thirty, which was a district request coming from student services. Um, what we did in this policy was we revised to specifically call out that only special circumstances will allow out-of-school, out-of-district enrollments. Um, and we would like to lift the language in section B regarding foreign exchange students and create a more standalone policy for that, which we did in the next policy, which would be forty-one forty. So, lifting language out of forty-one thirty, being a little bit more specific about when we do allow, um, out-of-district enrollments, and then also looking at forty-one forty, which is, it, actually, forty-one forty is a PLS update, we just chose not to accept that one when it came down, I think, a year and a half ago. The director at the time did not want to really touch that.
Williams, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I think what Dr. Ward's saying is correct, so we're not introducing a new concept here, we already had foreign exchange students, um, language, but that was included in forty-one thirty, so I, I do think it makes a lot of sense to really separate those two out, uh, because they really are two different concepts. Um, so now we'll have forty-one thirty just focusing on discretionary admission and, um, adding a little more particularities around that, and then having a separate forty-one forty foreign exchange students policy, and that is, that, like Dr. Ward said, that's consistent with how PLS has it, they have them separated out into two separate policies.
Okay, board members, questions on that one? All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven to consider for next week and two that are be taken off. Are we okay with consent with those or you want those on action? Consent? All right, those will be moved to consent with the two, parent involvement and school trips going back to the policy. And we'll move on to six point oh-two, which is policies for approval on second read, so these will become effective as of next week when we go down.
Okay, also, not receiving any questions here, um, this, the first policies really address language, um, the DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, um, and removing some of the language that is found in policy. Uh, the first one being forty-one fifty, school assignment, transfers, and program choice, enrollment. Um, the first bullet is removal of DEI language such as socio-economic diversity, diverse and geographic features, while also updating legal references.
Greg? I'm sorry, but, uh, same meeting, uh, because one of my colleagues had mentioned previously that they were questioning why we were doing these based on the Dear Colleague Letter instead of waiting for a PLS update, so I asked those at the School Board Association, would there be a PLS update based the Dear Col, based on the Dear Colleague Letter? And they said their recommendation was that we work with our attorney on that, which seems like what we've done here, so I'm not, not opposing this at all. But what's, just additional information, she said that the Dear Colleague Letter is under, um, a court order so that it cannot be enforced. And we have a state legislation, um, that is scheduled, I think, this month to come up for a potential veto override. When that legislation passes, then we will get a policy update from the School Boards Association and we will probably revisit these again, do you think?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do you want to hold or do we want to move forward? How do we?
It's consensus of the board, but that's just, again, additional information, we're making changes based on the Dear Colleague Letter, that is unenforceable.
They're, they're definitely going to come back to us, so.
Yes, I, I would say that, yes, um, you're right on both accounts, uh, both the Dear Colleague Letters, it's what I would consider state at this point, um, also, the General Assembly is working on that, so, um, I, I, I do think either way, we are going to revisit these. Um, so I think it's the board's prerogative rather you want to, um, table these changes for now, um, knowing that we might make other additional changes in the future or if you move forward with them, um, that there's not a, a bright line, um, which way you need to go right now, so if you wanted to table them and we can revisit them when we have more clarity, that would be perfectly fine.
Pam?
Based on the lawyer's advice, um, I would, because we're not, um, he's not strongly recommending that we address it now, um, I would ask that we would table it.
Okay, so, discussion from the board? These are just four, right? Four, or is that all?
One, two, three, four.
It's the first four?
Five.
It's four, yes.
It's four, yes.
Okay, so that's fifty-one fifty, forty-three oh-three, fifty-ten, and seventy-one hundred.
And it's entirely possible there will be additional policies that will be impacted, um, that, that's just unclear at this time, how many policies will be affected.
But the DEI language is, there's plenty.
Yes.
I think we just looked at the ones that were most controversial at this point.
That's correct.
Okay, Shannon, Shannon, and then Sam.
So, what are your concerns? You're thinking that, that it's going to be legal challenges to this, is that what you're saying, Greg?
I don't have any concerns personally, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm just saying that this is in response to a Dear Colleague Letter that is unenforceable and we're going to have this committee come back and do this work potentially again when that, if that veto override happens later this month. I mean, you can proceed with it if you want, uh, just adding a little bit more information to the discussion.
Okay, Sam?
I just, I just wanted to point out how challenging being the chair and facilitator of our policy committee is during these times. Uh, it's, everything's a moving target and, uh, um, I just wanted to point that out, that we spend a lot of time on things and before we finish the conversation, the rules have changed again, and so it's been a real challenge lately. Uh, it, it sounds to me like, speaking for Sam, that we probably should table this until we have more clarity, uh, but it seems like we're doing that with everything because of all of the moving parts that are in place right now between the feds and the state.
Yeah, and forty-one fifty is coming back up in the fall, that just was released, I believe, Friday or Thursday, so they just keep coming around, so before we can even touch them, they're being revised again, so.
Okay, I would need a consensus to do, to do that, to take. Are we okay with that or do you want to move forward with these? And they could, would be put on action? We, I mean, they're going to come back to us as Greg's saying.
I have a question, does this put, um, does this put people in limbo as to these policies? I mean, if we don't do something, then are, are these people in, in limbo that would have, uh, contact with these policies?
These people.
Well, I'm talking about, uh, when you're looking at recruitment, selection of personnel, things like that, does that put things on hold? Is, is?
No.
No? No, no, he said no.
Okay.
Dr. Kapicki, you want to weigh in? Way in?
No, it would, it would have no impact on that, no. And if, uh, Mr. Eisenhower feels different, let us know, but I, I say we know to that immediately.
No, I, I don't think that would change anything we're doing right now, so, I mean, I, I think it'd be perfectly fine to table for now, knowing that we will see these policies again in the coming months.
So, we're going to table till you actually get a PLS update on them, is that what the discussion?
Yes, until we either get a PLS update and/or, um, have more clarity from the federal side.
In your conversations, because we just got the fall, the last week, late last week, did they say it was going to be this year, next year, as far as PLS updates for these DEI policies?
Uh, I mean, I don't, I don't know. So, this was, uh, this was the lead training meeting, so they had other purposes. I met with their people afterwards to sort of ask about these particular issues, because again, another board member had brought up why we were getting ahead of the PLS update. So, that, that was the, the catalyst for the question.
Gotcha.
My understanding is there's not been an appeal on the stay against the Dear Colleague Letter and that I think October twentieth, October twenty-something is when the legislature is scheduled to consider two-twenty, Senate Bill two-twenty-seven for a veto override, I think that's right. Now, I guess if that veto override is successful, I don't know, from your experience with the School Board Association, how long they would take to get a policy update related to that. I guess it would depend on whether or not that, uh, particular legislation were, was effective immediately or if it's something that comes in effect at a future date.
Sometimes they come down in special releases like we got for the summer, they don't always do summer, but they did summer this year because there were some hot topics, so I guess we'll just have to wait and see.
So, where do these changes come from then? You're saying that they're?
The Col, Dear Colleague Letter that was shared with us last month.
Which William's saying those aren't legally binding?
Right, it, it's, um, yeah, for right now, there was a, there was a challenge to that enforceability, um, and so at this time, um, the determination of that is, it's, it's basically stayed until further notice. Um, we were trying to address, that, there were a series of policies that actually get addressed or affected potentially by that Dear Colleague Letter, I think it's almost thirty different policies. What we had tried to do was focus on four policies that we had, uh, had knowledge of or be maybe the most, um, focused upon, and so we were just trying to do what we thought, uh, and, I wouldn't say get ahead of it, but try to address particular concerns. Um, that said, this continues to be a moving target, um, like Sam and others have said, um, so at this time, based on the latest until we're getting, I, I would be comfortable, it's the board's call, but I would be comfortable if we table it until we get further clarification, um, because there's both state issues and federal issues involved here.
So, they will be coming back at some point through a PLS update?
Yes, we will be revisiting, I'm sure, all four of these plus additional policies.
Okay, but again, I need consensus from the board to table this, otherwise it'll move to action. Are we okay with table? I need a head shake or something, I mean. Okay. I guess over here, we're okay. On this side, Shannon, I guess it's.
Or are we, or is there some kind of? Federal law we're breaking not doing this?
No. I, I think we obviously want to do the right thing, um, and, and make sure we're following federal guidelines and state guidelines. This is, like I said, a little bit of a moving target and, uh, I think it would be fine to, um, table for now, knowing that we might need to revisit these in the future when we have more clarification.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're okay to table it until we get the PLS update? Okay. Let's move on to the last two.
Uh, I think it's just one more?
With child, the child abuse, is that?
Yeah, child, child abuse and related threats.
And homeless students?
Two, I think you guys already put homeless through, did you? You didn't do that? Okay, um, okay, so going back to forty-two forty, seventy-three twelve, child abuse and related threats to child safety, that was carried over from spring twenty-twenty-four PLS. Um, it revises language in section D to reference policy seventy-one thirty, which we've seen multiple times, which now contains the reporting requirements, um, from the new NCAC zero-six-zero-eight, that was a recommended change. It adds section H, which is a new statutory requirement that applies, it began in twenty-four-twenty-five, and then it updates legal references, which is also required, and we also updated cross-references.
Consent for that?
Consent for that one?
Sure.
Okay, everybody. And then the homeless students, 4125?
Yep, so that was a district request from our Student Services Department. We looked at Section B1 with enrollment. We wanted to highlight our federal laws, make sure we were in compliance for our McKinney-Bento kiddos. Section B3 talked about transportation added, so that we can adequately support our McKinney-Bento children. Section B4 talked about interscolastics, that we will not put any barriers in the way of students who want to do intramurals in clubs and things of that nature after school. In Section D, dispute resolution, it brought our policy into compliance with federal requirements. And we worked with the state McKinney-Bento consultant, very carefully, Amy Jewell, and her department specifically. They really wanted to revamp it and make sure that we were truly in compliance and not in danger of being out of step with new law. And Section F, we talked about, unaccompanied youth that experienced homelessness, we added explicitly to state the rights of those students who are in our system, because there are some youth who are not at home, they're not in a force, they're, they're just out there, and we have to do everything we can to support them. So, that was a really good, really good beefed-up policy.
William, do you have anything to add to that one?
No, I think it was a good job, thank you, those revisions.
Okay, board members, are we okay with this on consent, or we want? All right, that one will be on consent as well. So, that concludes our policies for second read. Thank you. Do you want a break, or you?
I have a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to take a five, 10-minute recess. All right, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we're going to recess, we'll be back in 10 minutes.
Okay, welcome back. We were just going through our policies. We took a 10-minute recess and we're now on item 6.03, which is the successor contract for the Public Consulting Group, PCG, and we have Mr. Penn at the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be back again. We had presented this contract for approval at the last board meeting and a question arose around student data privacy. Working with the vendor, we did confirm that the two biggest things that we do at PCG do not involve student data at all. It's staff data that's only utilized in that process. However, because they are the statewide provider of what's called the ECAT system, which is under a contract with the state of North Carolina, that the system does have student data that pertains to our Medicaid fee for services reimbursement, which is the smallest of the three pieces that we get from Medicaid reimbursement. As a result of that, we asked PCG to add our standard data privacy language to section 9.9 of their proposed contract, which they had no problem doing. So if we could scroll down to 9.9, which is on page six of the contract, I think it's right at the bottom of the page. This is language that we've lifted from other EC-related provider contracts and basically says, we understand that, you know, we are subject to FERPA and therefore will purpose the system, school system designated by PCG as a school official with legitimate educational interest in the, keep scrolling down, please, education records of participating students. So that's standard language that we have in a number of EC contracts. As I said, they had no problem including that language. Again, to come back to the core process of why we're doing this, the existing contract we have with PCG, which technically rolled over on July 1st of this year, was evergreen language, meaning that unless either side gave the intent not to renew at least 30 days prior to the expiration of the contract, the contract would automatically renew. I'm not a big fan of evergreen contracts. I think that locks you in for a period longer than you anticipate unless anybody's actively managing that contract, nobody's really paying attention to it. This contract, I think, is favorable for us because it freezes their contractual service fees for the next three years. And they've been steady at, I think, for about five years now at the same level. So it's a three-year contract with the ability to do two one-year extensions beyond that if the district so chooses. If the district then decides that instead of the end of the three years or near the end of the three years, we could theoretically go out and do an RFP for these services as well. But I think we're settling this contract as a successor on pretty favorable terms to us. Questions?
Board members, questions? Silence. Okay. Well, then are we okay with this? Or we want to put it on action or consent, consent? Consent on this side. Shake heads. Yes, consent over here? Okay. Well, we're going to move that to consent. So that'll be on the consent agenda for next week. Thank you. Don't go anywhere because you're next as well. So 6.04 is our budget presentation and adoption for 2025-2026 school year.
Slightly different set of notes. So we've done this process a little bit differently than we had done last year. And I think this is a fortuitous change in utilizing now a finance committee meeting as we do once a month. You may recall, we didn't have the finance committee at this point a year ago. So we did actually spend about an hour and a half going through the individual fund budgets that sit underneath what we're about to adopt tonight. I think that raised a good opportunity to ask questions for all the fund managers that sit within those funds, who are the folks that do that. You know, and I appreciate the participation of my colleagues with that process. And to a degree, I wanted to make sure the board had a clear understanding of, before you go to adopt a $536 million budget, you have an idea of what's the underlying components in each of those different funds. So let me kind of take you through sort of just a high-level overview. Now, of course, the state budget's not finalized yet, and with each day goes by, our ability to react quickly before the end of the fiscal year becomes more constrained. That continues to be a concern of mine. As I understand it, legislature's not back in session until later on this month. And, you know, there's not a whole lot of scheduled dates out there after that. I think funding for ADM growth, the so-called funding in arrears, is going to be fairly minimal this year compared to what we received last year. You know, as you heard earlier tonight from auditors, our local operating fund balance, as in 2425, actually came in higher than I anticipated, but it's still essentially non-spendable under our current policy limits. We actually passed a policy last year, as you may recall, that updated some guidelines around what the fund balance should be. And you may recall also that we picked a number of 4% of the adopted operating budget, the appropriated budget, in the most recent fiscal year. So the last fiscal year, 2425, the original budget was about $100 million for operating. It's not the capital piece, just the operating piece. 4% of that number would imply a fund balance of about $4 million. As you heard from our auditors tonight, and you're going to see in the exhibit in a few seconds here, we're at about $1.5 million. So that leaves us about $2.5 million shorter where we want to be for our target fund balance at this point. Good question got asked at the finance committee meeting, what does it take to increase fund balance? There's only one thing. Revenues have to exceed expenses, right? There's no other magic to it. There's no other things that you can do. We first had an interesting conversation earlier tonight around, you know, is the Kids Plus fund balance available to us? In a technical sense, the answer to that's yes. My caution would be, you may recall that you actually had to move 1.6 million to Kids Plus in the middle of a pandemic to fund their payroll, otherwise they're going to cease operations immediately, right? So there is sort of like a sweet spot, I think, around that fund balance for that fund. You certainly don't want to strip everything out of them. And as you're going to hear in a few seconds, their budget this year actually anticipates them using about a half a million dollars of their fund balance to maintain a balanced budget. So all these things factor into, how do we think about fund balance going forward? But as our auditor implied, live within your means, right? It's sort of the first issue, right? You've got an operational budget that's significantly higher than what it was last year. We're working pretty hard to make sure we try to generate a fund balance and a surplus for this year. That's the opposite of the deficit is a surplus. And we're going to be highly focused on that going forward. So to that point, the last point on the slide here, we talked about the higher-than-expected costs in local for transportation. We've taken measures internally to offset that. And so I feel pretty good as I stand here today where we are in terms of looking at our local fund budget at this point. So let's talk a little bit first about the state budget. We were funded based on last year's ADM of 35,169 students. The current allotment and the initial state budget's right around 262 million. The funding and arrears allotment last year is around 1.16 million. I'm estimating, and this was based on where we were through about day 35, that we would see about $331,000 in growth funds for this year. So obviously quite a bit less than we saw last year. This is all formula-driven. They're going to take what is our PMR, Principal's Monthly Report 2, so for the second month, because the second month is always higher than the first month. They will compare that to the 35169. Whatever that spits out as a difference, they'll multiply by, I think the figure is $6,133. That's the average state support for Camaro County schools. So the implication is we're going to see at least around $330,000. Now, we're down to, I think, day 39 and 40 today and tomorrow. We're close to the end of the process. There are a number of different adjustments that get made into those PMR reports. Mr. Treway, I know you know that as a former school principal, it's not always the first number that you look at, right? There's a few things that tweak into that. But Mr. Sane and I have been in constant communication around this along with Dr. Bowers to make sure that we sort of land on the right numbers so we know sort of immediately what to expect from the state in additional funding. I will say, school position allotments were spot-on. So credit to my colleague, Dr. Williams and his team, in looking at the expected student enrollment that we thought we were going to have, we were intentionally conservative of that process, right? We talked a lot about making sure we were on the low end of the expectations when it came to allotting positions that way. And I also have to say, you know, there was a minimal level of disruption to staff as a result of realignments that took place based on where we were for enrollment as of day 20. We didn't want to wait until day 40. And Dr. Williams, I know I'm speaking on your behalf, you're supposed to jump in if you need to, but it was just a handful of staff that we wanted making adjustments to. So I think from a school perspective, it felt less painful than it did last year, at which point we were making adjustments after day 40. Local operating budget, all right. So as I just said, local operating expenditures right now are going to be very close to the adopted budget we received from the county. We've taken steps to contain that known variance in transportation, which was driven off how the state actually computes its funding formula for transportation. We have had repeated and ongoing conversations with the county regarding the potential need for funding if state raises come in higher than 3%. We budgeted a 3% expectation into our budget for this year. If it comes in anything above 3%, we've given them kind of a heads up. Expect us to make an appearance at a board of commissioners meeting, especially looking for a special appropriation to cover the difference. Because frankly, our fund balance won't cover the difference now at this point. So as I said, fund balance of 1.5 million at the head of 2425 was higher than where I thought we were going to land, but it's still below the policy minimum of 4% of our prior year operating budget. I do expect to use $115,000 of fund balance in 2526, and I'm going to explain why. You may recall, the board appropriated $2.3 million for the ELA curriculum purchase last year. We're only allowed to pay the vendor based on what we actually received by June 30th. We can't pay for something we haven't received yet. When we looked at all the materials that we had received by June 30th, it added up to $2.2 million. The $2.2 million is obviously below the 2.3 that we had on the purchase order at that point. You close the purchase order, that amount rolls back into your fund balance, right? So what we're basically saying is take the $115,000 that rolled into fund balance on June 30th, back out again this year to pay the final part of the invoice that's due to that vendor. So it's a little bit of accounting stuff back and forth, but that's sort of how the process rolls. When we make estimates at the end of the year, and I just said to you that it came in higher, our fund balance came in higher than expected, that's because the estimates that we made going into the end of the year were conservative on purpose. We wanted to make sure there was enough in the appropriation and in the fund balance appropriation you approved. I think the final date was around July 7th to make sure we can cover everything, and it wanted to be more than we needed to. And one of the things that we're doing differently within my shop this year is that the finance team is going to be starting in October, two days from now, a detailed variance analysis. That's where we're going line by line through each of the budgets, each of the PRCs to where we stand based on the projections out to the end of the fiscal year versus where our budget is. That's two months earlier than I would usually do it, and part of the reason is, A, we don't have a state budget, and B, because we don't want to wait until December to see where we are, right? I think it's just too late in the fiscal year. So, you know, we're expecting to do about a three-hour deep dive on that information. And then I personally think we're in relatively good shape based on what I've seen so far, but this is sort of the detailed analysis behind, let's confirm with each of the budget owners to see where we are. And if we have variances, you know, one of the biggest things that happens right now is we start moving around personnel for funding sources, right? We always want to make sure that our highest compensated people are in the state, our more lower compensated people in local. That just takes advantage of the way that the state allocates fund to us by positions in some cases versus by dollars. So there's a lot of that work that will transpire over the next 30 to 45 days within our local operating budget. Local fund balance, if you heard Adam talk earlier tonight about Exhibit 3, this is what he was referring to. This is in our financial statements that were part of the agenda tonight. If you look at the bottom left-hand corner, that unassigned fund balance in the general fund. General fund equates the local. Local operating, not local capital, right? That 1.5 million, and you may have reheard when Adam talked about the non-spendables, the $900,000 in inventories, the prepaid expenditures, stabilization by state statute, those are receivables that we had at the end of June that you can't count in your fund balance. Now, we are going to receive that money, but you can't count it in your available fund balance at the end of the year. That's just an accounting rule, okay? But when we think about that 1.5 million, the question now is how do we get back up to 4%? And again, as I stated earlier, the only way to really do that is have revenues exceed expenditures for the full year, okay? In total, the initial federal budget entitlement is higher than where we were with 2425, but some variation you'll see on the next page. IDEA grant is now slightly compared to 2425 despite the fact that the increase in the population that's actually served by the grant. And remember, a lot of these federal grants are based on the appropriation that's made, right? It's not necessarily what's going on at your local level, but in totality, what's the federal government approving in each of these different grants. So our initial budget for federal is 16.6 million, which is going to include any carryover that we have from the prior year. And we're going to continue to manage our grant spending to ensure that 85% of the initial grant award is spent in the first year, which limits our carryover to 15%. The federal government will actually look pretty carefully at that, and our state partners will also look pretty careful at that, the state folks that manage this, because the government encouraged you to dispense at least 85% of the first year of the grant in the first year. So remember, most federal grants come on two-year cycles. What can happen is if you don't spend that 85%, you face a potential reduction in a future year because the government no longer believes that you needed all the money that they awarded to you in the first place. So there is a very strong incentive to make sure that we're managing to that 85% threshold. You can exceed it, but you certainly don't want to be below it in the first year. So as I talked about, this is actually what's looking at the new awards. You can see the differences going from Title 1, 2, 3, 4 down the page. Generally speaking, higher on Title 1, a little bit higher on Title 2, a little bit lower on Title 3, and a very little bit higher on Title 4. IDEA, as I mentioned, we're down slightly compared to where we were on the initial award last year. And there's two different pieces at IDEA. IDEA 619 is specifically focused on preschool students, actually grades, ages 3 to 5, to be more specific. But in total, and again, this is new award, not carryover, on the major federal grants, we're coming in at about 14.3 million compared to about 13.5 million in the prior year. Now, remember, you can't move local or state expenses to federal because you got more money. That's exactly what I'm referring to when I say you cannot supplant state or local funds with federal funds. If you receive more money, the federal government wants you to spend it on something that's incremental to what you're doing today, right? So I can't say, well, gee, I have a transportation shortfall. I'm going to force my transportation expenses into federal. No. That'd be a classic example of a supplanting decision, right? So these are designed to be supplemental to what you're actually already budgeted for in your state and local. Now, if there was something that, within the federal funds, and Dr. Roth talked about this quite a bit, as did Dr. Williams, when they went over the federal spending, clearly there's plans to support all the additional money that's out there already. But, you know, it's at least encouraging to see that the initial award was about $700,000 higher than we had received in the prior year. Other funds, capital outlay, that is the other piece that comes from the county. You know, we did have a successful meeting with them tonight. They did agree to realign the projects as we presented to you, I think, a month or so ago. You know, they fully understood what we were saying. It's not an increase in the appropriation. It's just a reshuffling of some of the projects. So that's actually very good news for us because I think it addresses reprioritization. We did talk again tonight about, as part of the upcoming budget cycle, that we're going to put in something that sort of combines those two together to give a unified look to what priorities we want to get to these projects. School nutrition's got a budget of 20.6 million, as you had our auditors talk about tonight. There is a very large cash balance that continues to require a spending plan. The federal government will let you carry cash equivalent to, I think, somewhere between four and six months of your operating expenses. Anything above that, you have to have a spending plan in place. Spending plan can be used to do a variety of different things, increase personnel costs, increase food costs, capital investment in your equipment, but you do have to have a spending plan. Now, you can have a spending plan every year that you have an excess balance, but you do have to develop one that exists every year. And the folks that oversee the federal program will review that and approve it as well. Kids Plus, a budget of 4.1 million, as I mentioned earlier, anticipates the use of about $500,000 of their fund balance. Now, at some point down the road, that implies a need that you're not going to want to continue to burn through your fund balance through Kids Plus, right? So there is an opportunity to look at in a future year, what does the fee structure for Kid Plus look like? Now, I know we talked quite a bit about that at the finance committee meeting about looking toward the market to determine where those fees should be. The other part of it, we also talked about, is a substantial discount that's afforded to employees here as well, right? So there's two different components. There's sort of the core fee level, and there's the discount level. Always come into the mix of what their revenue looks like going forward. And then what do you do with their fund balance becomes a decision we can address at a later date. Special revenues, initial budget of 10.8 million includes 2.8 million of utility expenses, and, you know, that's going to look odd when you see it. It has to do with the way that we've budgeted certain expenses in local that typically have been in Fund 8, and I'm thinking specifically of insurance as being a big piece of it. You may recall, I went after the county with a request to, because of the very sizable insurance increase that we had. So I basically had to move some expenses from Fund 2 to Fund 8, just to balance everything off within the system that way. Now, I have put in a worst-case scenario for Fund 8 of a fund balance use of 1.4 million. I think that's not going to be the final number. Two reasons. Number one, we have not gotten all the way through the realignment of personnel to funding sources I talked about earlier. That's an exercise that's upcoming. Number two, I was very conservative with the revenue estimates in Fund 8. In particular, sales tax refund has already come in about $150,000 higher than what I had budgeted. And I think unrestricted Medicaid is going to exceed the budget that's in there. The budget that's in there for unrestricted Medicaid right now is, I believe, 900,000 or 950,000. I would not be surprised if that comes in significantly higher than that. Part of the reason I believe that is that we've heard some of the quarterly money that's owed to us should drop by the end of December. If that does, that becomes accretive to the very large annual settlement that we usually see. That annual settlement's usually somewhere between 850,000 and $1 million. So I think there's a lot of upside in Fund 8, more so than I think there's any upside in Fund 2, of course, because Fund 2 is restricted to what was appropriated to us by the county, right? But there is some upside, I think, in the revenue side of Fund 8 going forward. And we're going to continue to monitor that very carefully. I do work very closely with the person who sees all the incoming payments into our system to say, did we get any Medicaid money today? She's on alert that if we see any, she's going to let me know the day the check comes in, okay? So in summary, unfortunately, still a lot of unknowns, particularly respect to the state budget and the derivative impact that has on local. I think we're going to expect to see more state funding, but I can't quantify the exact amount at this point. There's still a few PRCs, the smaller ones that have not dropped yet. I would anticipate for you as a board to, there's going to be several budget adjustments in the first few amendments to come out after this as we continue to true all these things up. But again, the focus this year, working with Dr. Kupicki and my fellow colleagues on the cabinet, is to continue to try to generate a surplus this year and rebuild the fund balance, okay? So that's kind of like the overview of where we get to the next piece, which is the actual numbers that support the budget amendments that you're used to seeing in our monthly meetings. Questions on that piece?
Okay, board members, questions? Pam?
Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't make it to the finance committee last week. I do think the timing of that meeting is very good in relation to prepping us for this. And so I'm sorry I missed that conversation, but layman's terms, regular people speak. So a budget's a forecast. It's based on what we think is going to happen. So my question is, is actually what's happening? So from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's really what my question is, is that the general, the state right now is funding us based on numbers from two years ago?
No, not exactly. Is there more to the question or should I?
Well, so that's what I'm just asking. So like, I appreciate that we're making estimates based on how many students we have and at our 40-day mark, and that ADM is what really determines to the state how much we're going to get from them. But what's happening, yeah, what are we forecasting, but what's actually here?
Right. What is here right now from the state is based on enrollment of 35,169. You saw that number in the presentation? That's the number from PMR, Principal's Monthly Report 2, from last year, which would have been right around October-ish for us last year, right? So when the state says funding in arrears, that's the student enrollment they're working on to do this year's funding. Now, keep in mind, you've only seen a mini bill come through, right? So it's continuation budget using 35169, and the only thing that we saw come through the mini bill that was of consequence was the step increases for certified staff. And that's not all certified staff, because remember, the steps run out basically after step 15. And if you're above step 15, you don't see anything until step 25 or 30, whatever the number is, it's 25, right? So we have not seen anything in the way of a general wage increase for any other employees, right? But right now, what we see in state funding is based on last year's October enrollment of 35169.
But it doesn't include, which is the forecasting part, it doesn't include the potential for salary increases. So whatever the Senate decides or whatever they negotiate, once they figure out what that is, we're forecasting 3%, but if it goes more than that, then the county's got to step in because we don't have the money to cover the difference.
And keep in mind, it's not going to impact every employee that way, right? We have state-funded employees that we should see an increase coming into state budget that addresses the overall raise that whatever the legislator decides to pass. It's really more the folks that are funded on local, the 550 or so that are there, 350 or so of classified, 200 or so of certified, that become the at-risk in terms of that, if we get above 3%, we got to go back for more money.
Additional questions? Shannon?
Mr. Penn, I had a lot of questions. Most of them were regarding the fund balance, but the auditor answered them for me. But I did have one for you. So when I went back and did some research last year, the concern were, we were $11 million in debt and $3 million in EC needs, and we were concerned at that point. So with our $1.5 million in the fund balance, and I noticed that some of the EC funding was less, well, we have to go into the fund balance if we have EC needs that we don't have funding for?
I think it depends on what drives that increase. In other words, if it's a salary increase that drives that, to the extent I have folks that are locally funded for EC, which would be unusual for us because EC staff typically is paid out of state, we may have to look at that as a result. One of the good things that I would say is transpiring this year compared to last year is that our EC vacancies are a lot less than they were. We have significantly higher staffing levels than we did last year. And so it's taking some of the pressure off some of the contractual obligations that we had to incur to address that. That's not to say we're not going to have substantial contractual obligations this year. We will. But I see ourselves from a staffing level in a fundamentally better place than we were. EC will always be a wild card in a negative sense in terms of any budget you will talk to for any CFO around the country, right? Because it's the one place that you really can't control what's going to come into your system. However, it's the one thing you're legally required to pay for, right? So I think that's the kind of thing that we monitor this very closely going forward. I asked our head of EC and Dr. Roth as well, how many students are we serving at this point compared to where we were at the end of last year? Because that's going to be a telltale sign, are you continuing to attract students that require EC services? I would be surprised if the answer to that is not yes. We are a center of excellence when it comes to providing those services. And so we attract parents with students that have EC needs to come to Camaro County. It remains a concern, and it'll be something that I always keep a close eye on going forward.
And one more question. What is your biggest concern with the budget moving forward at this point?
It's no question. That's an easy answer, frankly. You know, it's truly a unique position to be this far into a fiscal year and not knowing what your final number is on half your budget. It's disappointing, frankly. And my concern is the further you go into the year, the less chance you have to fix it, right? And earn your way out of certain actions that you would take as the year went along. It's part of the reason when I just talked about doing this deep dive in October as opposed to December, that's a key part of that rationale.
Miller?
When we had the audit, it said $11,482 per student, but that is not EC people.
That's all students.
That's all students?
Yes.
And we also get an extra amount. We get money for EC students for services, correct? We get money for EC students for services, correct?
Let me clarify that exhibit.
Yes.
Right? All that really did is it took our local funding, non-capital, it took our state funding, and it took our federal funding, and those three pieces together, and divided by the number of students we had.
Okay.
Right? So, it really doesn't, you could have EC funding rolling up into state or into federal in that formula, but it really just took those three funding pieces, add in that together, and divide it by that 35,169 we keep talking about, to give you what the average cost was per student at about $11,000 per student.
So, that is including EC?
It's going to be including all the EC students, that's correct.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Sam?
I just want to point out that the 40-day in arrears funding model hurts growing districts.
Absolutely.
We are not the typical district in North Carolina. Many districts in North Carolina are losing enrollment, which is another budgeting issue they're having to face because, you know, things are not going the way they want them to go probably because of the funding. And it's just, I don't know, this model hurts us in ways that non-growing districts don't have to worry about. And I just don't find it, whether it's staffing or whether it's other kind of funding, the in arrears model really hurts us in a way that many districts in North Carolina don't have to worry about.
We will continue to grow past the end of Month Two.
Yeah.
Right? That's the issue.
Yeah, to point out, just like the ECs you were talking about, because we provide great education, we are still, we're not losing that many students to charters and privates because we have a great product for our students. And it's not just people moving into Cabarrus County, it's also because they like our public schools.
Well said, Sam. Yeah, I appreciate you working on a budget. I do think we need a budget as a roadmap. I think it's important that we're at least here to vote on that. Half a billion dollars is a big number, so it'll be on action for next week, but it does, if you can say it's a big number, it's still conservative, so.
Yeah.
And again, when the state passes its budget, you'll come back to us with an amendment.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, you know, if the raises are under the 3%, we're okay. If it's above that, we'll have to talk to the county to make sure that our locally-funded folks are all.
So, just so you're familiar with the exhibit you have in front of me, I know all of you have seen this type of structure before. Can we zoom in a little bit on this so they can see the total number in the far-right column? That's a bit of a reading chart. So, again, $536 million in revenue, $536 million of expenses, would be what we're proposing. If you're reading from left to right, it's all the individual funds that we have, state being the biggest, is the 262 million I mentioned, local about 112 million, federal at 16.6, local special revenue at about 10.8. I guess this is to sort of quote-unquote the operating budget, that's governmental. Capital outlay, $110 million, that's everything that's in capital for this coming year. Child nutrition, about 20 and a half million. Trust and agency, we do have one scholarship fund that we serve as the custodian for, for $77,000. And then, lastly, Kids Plus coming in at just under 4.1. Gets you that total to 536 million. Let's scroll down to the next exhibit for just one second. Go past the next page, which is the signature page, and we can go to this one. So, what we tried to look at was, what's the change versus last year? So, go all the way down to the bottom, right? And say, "Hey, Phil, I don't understand. We had a final budget last year of 560 million. Why are we now sitting at only 536?" Well, the biggest issue is state raises haven't come through yet, right? That's one. There's a few PRCs in state that haven't dropped yet because they drop later in the year, so that's another piece. So, you'll see we're down about $1 million in state. Local current expenditures, well, remember, your final budget last year included fund balance appropriation that we're not going to do again this year, right, other than the 115,000. So, we're down about 2 million there. Federal grants overall, we're going to wind up spending a bit less than what we spent last year, just because it was more carryover coming into '24, '25. So, subtotal on the operating budget, down about 6 million, but the biggest piece is capital outlay, and it's just the timing of how the county appropriates funds to us for things like construction and all the other capital items that we have. The capital budget this year is 110 million. Last year, the final one was 128 million, so we're going to be down about 17 million off that. So, I do expect we will move closer to that 560 million again, but we may not get all the way there. It'll depend a lot on where the state budget comes out to see how close we get to that number, okay? Let's jump down a little bit more. Okay. Same thing with the revenues, and again, of course, this is balanced, going to balance out. You'll see what we've tied out is the exact same numbers and changes in revenues that balance out to the balanced budget. So, again, a total of this year of 536 million compared to last year is a little over 561, almost 562 million. Decrease overall of 25 million, but again, that will not be the final figure. We'll have to come back to you pretty much with a monthly amendment going forward. Jump to the next one, please. So, this lays out, it funds down the rows on the left. It's the beginning budget. We haven't made any budget adjustments yet because it's the initial adoption. Current budget balance is going to be the same figure. What have we spent so far is about 72 million across all those. Got POs and encumbrances of about 74 million. The bulk of that is in capital right now, mostly tied to our construction projects. Unencumbered balance that's still out there is about 389 million, right? And I'm not seeing anything that would give me pause around where do we stand at this point, right? Now, keep in mind, this was run on 9/23. Our final payroll of September was not running, is not in these numbers, but I will quickly look down the page to see, do I see anything that looks off versus where we are at the time of year? You may have heard me, remember, say this a few times last year. If I'm three years through the fiscal year and everything else is equal, I will expect to have spent about 25% of my budget. If I'm six months into the year, I might expect to have spent 50% of the budget. Is there anything that looks off here? And the one that looks off is capital because we have so much tied up in the purchase orders right now, right? That are out there for the construction projects. Let's jump down to the next one. Same thing, but a little different. Look at the purpose code that's out there. You know, we break everything down by purpose code, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and you can see what's considered instructional, system-wide support services like transportation and those types of things. Again, coming down to the same figures, but it shows a differently, a little bit different view by program instead of just by fund, but it ties out to the same number that the unencumbered balance right now is still at 389 million. And I think that might be my last exhibit. But going forward, the plan would be obviously, same thing we did last year, whenever there's a need for a budget amendment, we'll explain to you why there's a need for a budget amendment, what changed in the prior month. And once we get through this deep dive in a couple of days here, I'll start to include outlooks for the remainder of the year, what do I think we're seeing right now? And I will tell you, since we've addressed internally the transportation issue, I don't have any concerns as of right now for where we are on local.
Any final questions, comments? All right, we'll have that on action for next month or next week.
Yeah, if you can filter any questions you may have before you adopt the budget, just filter them through the chairman if you would, and the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. All right, next is 6.05, submission of the 2025-26 School Improvement Plans, and bringing back Dr. Bowers again. Welcome.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, and Dr. Kupicki. Certainly, it's my pleasure to stand before you again tonight to be able to present this year's school improvement plans for your consideration. One of the things that certainly referenced in our previous presentation tonight dealing with low-performing schools in our tiered support model were the actual support plans themselves. And tonight, what we've done is been able to share those with you, and what I'll do is I'll walk through the process leading up to the development of the school improvement plans, some of the efforts that took place within the school level, certainly the work that aligns with statutory requirements as well as Cabarrus County Schools' policy as well, and then I will certainly entertain any questions that you might have moving forward. So, if we think back, just kind of framework with what we operate here, you know, we had mentioned this earlier, our effort is to make sure that everything that we do is driven by continuous improvement. It's not saying that everything that we did last year works and let's continue that. It's continuing that and then some. So, moving beyond that and always finding the ways in which we can certainly reach more students, provide instruction, provide resources, provide support to the benefit of more students, and then ensuring that we're doing this intentionally and we're doing it in a way in which we know where we are each and every step along the way. One of the things that we certainly will be mindful of throughout the process with the continuous improvement is alignment. So, when we began this framework, if you will, that was more of a repurposing of how we do school improvement planning here in Cabarrus County Schools, really took a deep dive into where we were from an alignment standpoint. It begins with the State Board of Education's strategic priorities, and then you can see the flow-through then becomes the public school unit itself, and then ultimately then at the school level. And so, as we go through this, you'll hear me speak to that time and time again in our earlier presentation with Ms. Reeves here. We talked about some of the district's focal areas, some of the efforts to which we want to identify as going to be those areas of improvement for us as a district, and then trace that back to how does that then align with our district priorities and then the state's priorities. So, here you see the State Board of Education's strategic priorities. And if you look at each and every one of these, while we might not find each of these particular pillars embedded within our current strategic plan, what you will find are commonalities. It speaks to things such as preparing students for life after high school. It speaks to making sure we're doing right by our educators and revering them each and every day. It speaks to making sure we have community engagement and partnerships. It speaks to making sure that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars from an operational standpoint as well. These become those same pillars that we see within our Cabarrus County Schools' strategic plan. There at the center of what we operate from as a district will be teaching and learning. And inspiring off of that will be each of these support mechanisms in place that speak to that. It's making sure that we've got community engagement in place. It's making sure that we have student wellness and safety identified is one of our leading efforts. It's ensuring that we're good stewards, again, of operational and financial operations, and then also staffing, high-quality teachers and educators to make sure we're putting the best in front of our students each and every day because they deserve that. So, this is our continuous framework. I've introduced it before. You see the cyclical nature of this. And these are our school improvement goals that we've identified for '25, '26. Again, each of these are referenced within what would be our strategic priorities and the State Board of Education's strategic priorities. It's making sure that we prioritize student wellness and the health and safety of our students, and we're actually monitoring that, and how do they really feel about the school, the learning that's taking place, their advocates within the building, and the culture in which they have a chance to be a part of each and every day. It's making sure that we're monitoring those teaching and learning aspects. All goals are monitored. Do not, let's not necessarily say that they're not, but we've prioritized those to which we say, "We believe these will move the needle for us as a district and allow us to attain greater heights." And with that is that foundational literacy. It's the continued focus on what will be eighth-grade math and Math One. It's the ACT work keys combination performance such that we know that that prepares students with a set of skills that they can utilize in a postgraduate environment. And in making sure that schools are intentional about what they've identified as an additional choice within themselves, because we know too, schools have some areas to which they say it's important for them to give attention to such that they know it will lift certainly all the performance of students that are assigned to them. So, here are the updates that have happened, all right, since the time we last met. District staff has gone through and has reviewed each of the plans. We've certainly then reached back out to schools and making sure that they've been formatted and that their plans themselves are representative with the language that we know will be best designed to be able to help students. We've also had principals come in at the beginning of the years with our continuous school improvement meetings, and the principals have shared what their goals are for the upcoming year, how they're going to be monitored, and as part of our tiered support structure, the frequency with which they will receive support from district staff. We have the staff there, to which we talked about the alignment aspect. Board, you have been provided a copy of all the plans, and there are two types of plans which we've actually made available for your review. One is called the Our Direction Reports, which is a bit of a summary report. It's a cleaner, easier, simpler way to really look at the actual identified measurables that a school has noted for the upcoming year. And then, the other is called the Comprehensive Student Report as well, and that's more or less the underbridge version, if you will, the full detail behind the scenes with it. So, therefore, you can get a sense of what are going to be those key activities, those key measures, and certainly some of the resources that schools will need. You can see here that our district supports fall within a curriculum bucket, a tiered support school bucket, and a professional development bucket, each of which we referenced in the earlier presentation tonight. And we'll continue to do that throughout the year as well to make sure that we're meeting the needs of schools and they're getting the support that they need. This is our timeline, and it traces back to the work that was done. Again, I reference back to summer leadership back in the month of June. It really began with that planning where schools met as teams and came together for the purpose of really driving that collective measure to say, "How can they now cast an eye towards what would be the upcoming school year and be able to say, 'Here's what we are going to commit ourselves to, to making sure we're providing better learning environments for our students.'" And then, from that effort, they took it back to the school level and continued to refine and meet with their stakeholder teams and their school improvement teams and be able to get input such that they were truly making sure that what was being presented was something that would be inclusive of all members at the school community. And then, once that was taking place, we were able to go out and capture some assurances from the schools to say, "Did the plan include these statutory requirements and these policy requirements?" So, we've been able to collect that from each and every voice at the school level to say, "The plan did indeed address all facets of what is expected from a, we shall say, a point of compliance as well." And then, ultimately, they were viewed and then they were vetted for making sure that they were aligned with what the district's efforts were going to be. Tonight, I'm here to present those to you for your consideration, and certainly, we would ask for any questions that you had with an approval at next week's board meeting. I've included here for your review and also as part of this presentation, some links that have been embedded into this. The links link back to what the statute itself allows for and provides, what the current policy, 3430, within Cabarrus County Schools' board policy outlines. The SIP assurances form that was collected from the schools to say that they have indeed made sure that their plans include all the elements that are necessary, and then the Our Direction Reports, and then the comprehensive reports. With that, I'll pause for any questions or additional feedback or clarification that might be needed.
Okay, Board members, questions, comments? Greg?
I'll just say, glance through some of those comprehensive reports this afternoon, and it's a lot of them. I'm glad we got a month to look over them.
That's right. I like the Our Direction Report.
Yeah. You know, I think for me, it would be good to have maybe a phone call, just open up one of those and just go through and have somebody explain to me.
Absolutely.
What each of these sections are, so that as I'm going through, evaluating the rest of them, I'll know what I'm looking at.
Be more than happy to.
Thank you.
That's great. Madison, you want to chime in?
I just know that going through the process with my school, there is a lot of thought going into it, so everybody's following the rules and we're doing what we can.
All right, so, we will be voting on these next week.
Yes, sir.
All right.
No, sir, the ones for November would be the low-performing schools that we'll pull back out again and reintroduce those to you.
If you want to read them all, yes, you do. It's open for the public, so all those have been published on the board docs.
Yes, sir.
They can go through them if they'd like to, and they can come talk to us during public comment period next week if they'd like to.
Yes, sir.
That'll be on action. All right, next is, thank you. Next, we're bringing back Dr. Sandy Ward, and we're going to cover the 2025 Academic Calendar Revision Request.
Good to see you all again. Tonight, we are here to recommend a revision to this year's calendar, to '25-'26 Academic Calendar. Initially, the Calendar Committee proposed ending the school year on May 21, 2026 to maximize instructional time and to reduce the number of staff workdays following the last day of school. I know Mr. Tredaway hates that, when we waste time on the end, so we were like, "Okay, let's add some more instructional time at the end." Well, as we began planning for graduation this year, we realized that our proposed[1764.63] date not only fell on Memorial Day weekend, which we did consider, but we did not fully consider the impact of Race Week. So during this time, our community partners, local law enforcement, our first responders are heavily involved with everything that's going on in the track. I live down there, I see them all, so they're there. That's where everybody is. While they indicated they could provide a level of support, it's certainly not the level of support that we've grown accustomed to at our traditional high school graduations. And so with that in mind, the committee is now recommending that the last day of school for students this year be moved from May 20 to May, from May, to May 20, sorry, rather than May 21st. This adjustment aligns with our tradition of holding our PLC and CBA graduations on that Wednesday night, followed by Thursday and Friday hosting our eight comprehensive high school graduations. That way, we can have full support from our local community partners. So it was our bad. We're trying to rectify that now. And before we ask, graduation dates have not been shared, so no one has been inconvenienced, no one has bought a ticket, no one is flying in on the wrong day. We knew once we started this year that we were going to bring this to you, and typically we do calendar in October. So we intentionally held off on sharing information for graduation for that reason. And once you all make a decision, we will then share that out with families in the community.
So the graduation dates are posted up here on that.
What, okay. Yeah, I didn't change it. I want, you're going to tell me whether or not you're going to change it, if you're going to change now from May 20, from May 21st to May 20th.
So there's two requests. The request would be to change the last day of school by one and then change the graduation dates from May 20th to 21st.
Right, yeah, I didn't make any adjustments to the calendar. I was just showing.
Right, but that is, you're making that request.
Yes. So I'm requesting that school end on May 20th, and that graduation would then take place the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay, questions and comments from the board members? Nope? Okay, are we okay with that change? Want to put that in consent? Okay. That'll be on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a change to that one too? That's not. What did you want? All right, so we're going to move on to, we're now at 6.07, which is next year's calendar proposal. Dustin, welcome.
All right, good evening. Thank you for this prime time slot. That's greatly appreciated. We, I have the privilege of presenting you with our proposed 2026, 2027 academic calendars. We will start by diving into our calendar committee. And so I present this on behalf of our calendar committee. The purpose of this committee is to collaboratively create a calendar proposal to share with our Board of Education. Our goals are to ensure a common understanding of the current North Carolina school calendar requirements, and those are laid out in General Statute 115(c)84.2. And then also to provide stakeholders with an opportunity to provide input on the academic calendar. So two-pronged there. We have basically a frame we have to work within, we have guidelines. And then within that frame, there's limited flexibility where we have to balance all of the different stakeholder input and preferences. So it's a trade-off in our priorities when we look at the flexibility we have. One thing I would like to share at this point, though, is that our calendar committee, having participated on all sides of it now at this point, it's an incredibly well-run process. It's a strength of our district. And our administrative services team really owns that. So special thanks to Dr. Sandy Ward, Dr. John Legrand, and Becky DeQuilla for their work on that, because they definitely lead what is, I think, a top-notch process in terms of that. So our calendar committee is made up of 30 members from various CCS stakeholder groups. They include parents, teachers, and principals from every single level, senior leadership and board members, I believe our most recent participants were Ms. Escobar and Ms. Moore. And then there were five meeting dates scheduled for this group in order to bring forth this proposal. So some requirements to keep in mind, and these are legislated. The calendar has to cover at least nine calendar months. Our calendar actually extends well into 10 months, so we meet that requirement. The next is an either-or. You have to have either 185 days or 1,025 instructional hours. And we have traditionally followed the hours requirement. It more accurately captures instructional time versus a calendar day. And then just a caveat to that or sort of an extra provision to that that's arrived in recent years is we also have five days or 30 hours that we can use for remote learning for inclement weather. That's above and beyond what's already provided. And then last piece is our 10-month staff, and this became particularly important this year. Our 10-month staff were funded for 215 working days. And so that means from the day that you start school, or the day that you start your 10-month calendar, 215 business days later, you have to end that calendar. And you'll see why that was important when we take a look at our proposal. Just as a reminder, we do choose in Cabarrus County as part of the 2022 Schools Act to exercise flexibility in terms of doing an early start, and that is because we see the benefit that it has for our students and for our community. So at this point, we could jump into our first academic calendar, which is the traditional You guys all have copies of this in print up at the dais with you, but I want to highlight a few key pieces of this academic calendar. You'll see that the first day for 10-month staff is on August the 5th, with the first day of school being August the 12th. You'll see that our end-of-quarter half-day dismissals will be on October 9th, December 18th, March 19th, and May 26th. Those mark the end of our academic periods. There also are only early release days, which is a major change from this year's current calendar. There were two additional early release days. The feedback we got from the committee and from our stakeholder groups is that those were not preferred and not as beneficial as having full instructional days when possible. We did preserve the ones at the end of the, the end of the marking periods for grading purposes for schools, in addition to the fact that they typically, for the end of the semester, they're going to be exam days for high schools and at the very end of the school year, testing days for many of our other schools. Additionally, the last day for 10-month staff is on June the 1st. You will see that that follows the Memorial Day holiday. In order for staff to be able to receive the Memorial Day holiday, there has to be a working day after that holiday, which is part of payroll guidelines. So as such, you'll see that this schedule, this calendar mirrors the previous year's calendar. We have in total 84 days in the first semester and 90 days in the second semester. There is a little bit of a gap there. We took that back to constituent groups and stakeholder groups to get more feedback. Much of that gap exists because of when we need to start and end due to all of those constraints that we talked about. And the feedback that we got from schools and from stakeholder groups was that the spring semester oftentimes is interrupted by inclement weather, as well as many of our end-of-year activities, such as testing, all of the other activities that happen at the end of the year. So having extra days padded in the second semester is actually beneficial in ensuring that first and second semester are actually more equitable than they are otherwise. We can then take a look at our early college calendar. So if you would, please pull that up. A couple of key factors to keep in mind with our early college calendar. We have three early college principals who collaborate to create this calendar. One thing that's really important to keep in mind is that our early colleges are affiliated with Rowan Cabarrus Community College and the Cabarrus College of Health Sciences. And so they operate on those schedules and at the will of those schedules, quite honestly. And so that's why you'll see variance in the way that these schedules work. We are really proud that this year we were able to align many of the common factors, though, in terms of start date as well as spring break. That's all in service of our families to try and help those families that have students across all different school formats. But you can also see that they have a little better balance in terms of semesters. There's 86 days in Semester 1 and 84 and a half days in Semester 2. But again, they are at the will of their community college partners in terms of scheduling and calendar as it is. So I now open it up for any questions that you guys have about our proposed calendars. Just one note I will make based on the previous conversation, this calendar does preserve our Wednesday, Thursday, Friday graduation, so we will not be back next year, or we should not. We do not anticipate being back next year with a calendar change due to graduation.
Okay, board member Sam?
I love the fact that we are, we have fewer early release days. It makes total sense to do that at the end of the quarter. I also, and I appreciate the fact that you have explained for everyone the restrictions that the calendar committee has. It's not like they can willy-nilly, you're really hemmed into like five days or something like that. The other thing I appreciate with this calendar is starting on a Wednesday, that the students start on a Wednesday. Starting on a Monday is, it's a long week.
And taking into account, we also do staggered entry with our kindergarten families. That allows for a more traditional start for those families with the three staggered days, and then school begins on a Monday for those kindergarten. Gives, I think, a more natural process for kindergarten integration as well.
But I applaud this calendar and the work product that the committee has come up with.
Thank you, Sam. Shannon?
And I agree with you, Mr. Tredaway. The feedback I got this year was please don't let us start on a Monday again. So the Wednesday start, I think, would be appreciated. And also, the uncapped workdays, or it looks like they're on a Monday, which would give teachers an option to take a family long weekend or something like that.
And another major piece of feedback we got from families is that if, if we're going to have workdays, which we have to have in order to support our strategic priorities, to schedule around low-attendance days like Easter Monday, because we use a holiday on Good Friday. But in order to accommodate those, families asked that those were adjoined to the weekends rather than in the middle of the week whenever possible. And obviously, we don't control holiday dates. Those are set by the State Commission, but we do control those capped and uncapped workdays. And so the committee worked really hard in order to keep those on the weekends or attached to the weekends.
Madison, you want to weigh in?
I'll say the same as everybody else. Thank you for starting on a Wednesday, coming from a teacher perspective. And also, starting on a Wednesday for the workdays, that requirement is also, it's a good way to ease back into everything, so thank you.
Pam?
Thank you. Thank you for explaining everything. I was saying earlier that being on the calendar committee is great, but we stopped meeting in April, so it is hard for me to retain like all the work that we did to the point we're actually voting on it, so I appreciate the recap. I will just also say that there is a lot of vigorous debate during these meetings and deciding on these days. And there are parents, EC parents, who talk about how these schedules affect their ability to, you know, get to school and things like that. So there are a lot of things taken into consideration. So I just, I appreciate the work of all those 30 people because it is a lot of work. And like Sam said earlier, we don't have a ton of wiggle room, but we are trying to do what's best for kids, which is making sure that they're getting not just instructional hours, but it makes sense and it's doable.
We'll also thank the committee, everybody on the committee for the difficult work. I will say that, like, one feedback that I got was people did not like workdays in the middle of the week. Wednesday workdays were not a thing parents appreciated at all. And so I don't see much of that. It looks like all those days are aligned to holidays, except for Tuesday, November 3rd. What is that?
It is an election day.
Oh, okay, that makes sense then.
So that permits our staff to be able to fully participate in election process, but also enables us to use our schools as community voting precincts.
Love that. This looks like a great calendar. Thank you.
Well, all fan mail should be directed to sandy.ward@cabarruscounty.com.
Okay, just for my understanding, so we had 87 days in this year's calendar. It's down to 84 in the first semester. What were the changes? Where were the three days gone? Where'd they go?
The major driving factor in that was that in order to have an early start, but still be able to end after Memorial Day, because Memorial Day fell a week later, that really kind of constrained our starting date, which did shorten our ability in the first semester. The only other factors that we had control over were those workdays. And first semester is a critical time for capped workdays in particular, because when you think about any of your strategic initiatives, if you're working on those in April, then you're not, you're not getting that work done in the appropriate time. So September, October, November are the key times to have those workdays.
Okay, so it looks like the middle of October, there's two consecutive workdays?
It is, yes, sir.
You didn't do this year.
Yep. The other thing to keep in mind is that the state does require that we provide opportunities for our staff to be able to use their accrued leave, so some of those uncapped days are for that purpose. The other thing I would bring to your attention is we actually only decreased academic hours by about six hours because of the fact that we also removed those two half-days. So in terms of instructional time, it is nearly identical.
Okay, but we're still starting in early August and we're ending before Memorial Day.
Yes, sir.
So that's not consistent with the state laws, so we'll have to.
Correct, sir. We're.
Put this on action for next week.
Yes, sir.
And allow the public to comment on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So moving along, we are now at 6.08, which is the Cox Mill High School Track Resurfacing Project. And Brian Cohen, welcome.
Good evening again. So the Cox Mill High School has been identified through recent budget requests with Cabarrus County as needing their track surface replaced and rubberized like all the other high schools, with the exception of Northwest Cabarrus, which will receive a new track as a part of the proposed new school. Over the last three years, the district's made significant improvements to the other high school tracks, and those include Mount Pleasant High School, Concord High School, JM Robinson High School, Hickory Ridge High School, and Central Cabarrus High School. That leaves Cox Mill as the remaining school and track surface that is in need of repair and replacing due to the failing asphalt surface that is beyond a safe and consistent running surface. The inter-local purchasing system, or TIPS as we call it, maintains cooperative purchasing contracts that allow school districts to procure the goods and services without conducting the separate competitive bidding process. The General Statute does have an exception that allows and permits the use of these contracts that are awarded by this competitive group purchasing program. Geo surfaces southeast is an awarded vendor under these TIPS contracts, and the one including that's attached to your agenda is for synthetic and natural turf fields, running tracks, sports and activities equipment, and stadium bleacher installation. All these contracts were competitively solicited and awarded through this TIPS program. The agreement with Geo surfaces is good through April 30th of 2026, and it's worth noting by utilizing these TIPS contracts, this board does remain in compliance with the state procurement laws while taking advantage of the competitively bid pricing. With the approval of the funds by Cabarrus County tonight that Mr. Penn spoke to earlier, we're asking for this board to approve the contract for Cox Mill High School track upgrades to Geo surfaces southeast, utilizing the TIPS contracts in the amount of $695,905. Geo surfaces has been a trusted trade partner with Cabarrus County since 2020, and they consistently maintain their quality of work and stand behind their projects without fail. They are a local company and have demonstrated a strong commitment to Cabarrus County Schools and our community. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Questions, board members? Greg, and then Pam.
There's four different track system options here, and you selected urethane sealed base matte structural spray.
Spray, yes, sir.
13-millimeter black.
Yep.
What is the advantage of that over the others? Why do we pick that one?
So it's the, it's a slightly thicker surface the way it's laid, but it also is a sealed system. So the sealed systems essentially do not allow water to permeate through the rubberized membrane. Traditional, old-school, rubberized tracks didn't have that sealing on top, so water would eventually penetrate through that rubber membrane, and that's what starts degrading one, the rubber, and two, the asphalt surface below. So this system basically seals off the track itself altogether.
So how long do we expect that to last?
You'll have to probably do a refresh on the crumb rubber that's the top coating. Every, it depends on the use. You know, tracks that get a lot more use, you'll have to do that sooner, but in a five-to-tier, 10-year range is what you would anticipate having to re-code a track.
Which school has the oldest version of this, this material? Where did we install this first?
Yeah, well, no, West Cabarrus isn't sealed, though. It's a, it's a different system because it was part of a bid package. So probably Concord High School and Mount Pleasant were the first ones we did the sealed system on.
Those seem like they're holding up. That's only a few years old.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I, as someone who's relatively new to this, it blows my mind that a quarter-mile ribbon of asphalt with a layer of rubber on top is going to cost almost $700,000. And I get it, like, I tried to.
And they are resurfacing, so they're going to mill down all that asphalt that's there because it's degraded and it's not, you know, that's, that's probably a more costly part of it to begin with.
Yeah, I noticed that, like, the demolition and everything, that was half the cost. I tried to figure out that, I tried to prove to myself that that was too much money. I looked back at what we had spent on the previous tracks. They were all in the area of $600,000. I looked at contracts from other school districts for this similar surface, and that seems like the going rate. So as a sticker shock for me, apparently that is a reasonable rate. I do have a question on the TIPS process, though. You said that's competitively bid. Was it competitively bid at some point, and then they're approved, and now we can go to that particular vendor? Or are there multiple vendors through the TIPS system that is bidding on our project?
The former.
The former?
Yeah.
Is there any benefit, because we've done the TIPS several times now, is there any benefit to just going back every now and then and doing a local bid just to compare and make sure? just to compare and make sure that we're not getting better pricing? We couldn't get better pricing through a local bidding process?
There's no reason you could not go through a competitively bid process, but we're trying to maintain some continuity and quality of work. And again, they stand behind their work, because they're just up the road in Moore's. If we have a problem, we call them, and they're there the next day to fix it. There is no reason why you couldn't do that, no. And to, you know, when we go through the bid process for a new school, though, that will be, it will be bid out, because they won't solicit it this way. So they'll have to receive three different bids at minimum for that package on a new school.
That will come through the construction management.
That would come through the CM. That is correct.
I did read that we could use the TIPS program to identify multiple vendors and then do sort of a mini-bidding process with those vendors that we identified through TIPS. Is that an option that we would consider looking?
You're educating me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll send you the link to where I found.
Sure.
Just thanks, Greg. Pam?
Thank you.
Yes.
We went to the Charger Cup on Saturday, which was at Cox Mill, and I was at the 50-yard line. And I looked at the track, and there was a crack that's across the whole thing. So, and I know that there's cracks other places from other times I've walked it and stuff. So I guess my question is, is with timing, I understand the importance of using this. I understand this company and all of that. But what does the timing look like, and how does it affect track season that's going to start?
Partly, why we brought it before you this month was so that we could get started and get the bulk of the work done before we get into what could be cooler temperatures that would affect the completion of it. The goal with Geo surfaces is to have it done by mid-February for track season, for the spring season to start, which I think is sometime around the 14th of February is when they start practices. And if we just run into a cold, wet fall and winter, you know, we'll have to just reevaluate.
Melanie?
Is this one of the projects we have already included in our budget?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
Questions on this side? All right, do we want to put it on action, or we want to put it on consent?
Consent.
Consent? Consent over here? All right, we'll add that to our consent agenda
Thank you, sir.
for next week. Thank you, Brian. All right, next is 6.09, School Construction Networking, Network Cabling and Paging Proposal. And the well-dressed Mickey Farmer is here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. For the audience, this evening, we'll be sharing our recommendations for cabling and paging infrastructure for the three schools that Mr. Cohen so well detailed out earlier this evening. The goal is to ensure that the schools have reliable network, phone, and paging systems. We'll start with an overview. We received bids on cabling at each of the three new sites. For paging, we only requested bids for two of the sites, as the Opportunity School does not require paging, and will use internal phone system for its paging. The presentation shares each of the bids with a recommendation to receive with the lowest qualified and responsive bidder. For the cabling, five vendors were emailed the RFP and blueprints. The bids included a $5,000 contingency amount, $5,000 contingency amount in the event that there are change orders or additions needed at each site. This money is not paid if there are no changes. Of the five vendors that were emailed, we received three bids that complied with the RFP conditions. The chart on the slide shows the three bids for each of the schools highlighted. You'll see we are choosing the lowest of the three bids. Proposal is to move forward with these lowest qualified responsive bidders of each site. KNC Technology for the Culture and Web Replacement School and for Opportunity School, and Universal Voice Data for Mary Frances Wall Center. For paging, paging was requested, again, at only the two schools, Culture and Web Elementary Replacement and Mary Frances Wall. Bids were received from two vendors. These bids are shown on the slide. We recommend awarding both paging projects to KNC Technology, who have the lowest bid for each. To summarize, cabling contracts are recommended for KNC and Universal Voice Data. Paging contracts are recommended for KNC, and these recommendations reflect the lowest qualified bids and the contingency built-in to each protects us from unexpected changes. I'll pause here to take any questions you may have.
Board members, questions? Sam?
Kind of, kind of surprised at the range of the prices that came in. I don't know, I don't know what I expected, but it was a pretty big, pretty, I mean, there's a lot of variability there in the pricing. I guess my question would be, KNC gets everything but Mary Frances Wall. Is that correct?
That's right.
And it's like $2,000 difference. Is there any advantage in giving them that contract so that we're dealing with one vendor? I'm not suggesting that, but I'm asking, is there any reason to stick with them for all of it? I don't know.
You'd have to rebid, wouldn't you?
I think you would, and I see where you're going with that, but both KNC and Universal Voice Data have been vendors that we've worked
Okay, so we have a relationship with them to begin with. Okay, I guess that's where I was going. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions? So you're familiar with both companies? You're okay with both?
Correct, yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, board members, want to put this on action or consent? Consent on this side? Consent over here? All right, that'll be added to our consent agenda for next week. Thank you. All right, we are up to 6.10, Annual Program Choice Review and 2026-27 School Year Recommendations. And we have Sarah Reeves and Allison Whitaker. Wait, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Kapicki, and members of the board. We are proud to come today to present to you some program choice updates. I will say if Dustin was the late, the primetime show, we are the late-night show at this point. So we appreciate your time and attention to this in point and matter. We're here today to really talk about our annual review, as well as 26, 27 program choice recommendations for you. So as we begin, I think it's really important to start about our why, or what's spelled out in board policy around the purpose of program choice. Why does it exist in the purpose of it? And that's really going to be our North Star, our guiding practices around all of our annual review report plans, as well as all of our recommendations. And it really is to be able to draw a diverse group of students from around the county to provide programmatic theming for them and unique opportunities that might not be available in every school across the county. Additionally, we have two specific board policies that spell out or name exactly what program choice needs to do in terms of our obligations. And the first of which is really speaking to enrollment criteria and offering transportation where available. And the second piece is that written report, which we are providing to you today annually and is attached in the appendix of our presentation. Dr. Bauer shared this previously, but we operate very close in tandem with multiple departments. It's important that when we talk about program choice, we don't operate in isolation, and we use the same guiding principles when we talk about opportunities as it relates to realignment. And so when we're talking about programmatic recommendations, I would be remiss not to mention the fact that there might be situations where we may want to make a recommendation, but there may be limitations, whether it's capacity and utilization, proximity, demographics, or feeder patterns. We're looking at all of those elements when we're talking about programmatic review, as well as any new revisions and recommendations. And as we shared before, priority two, we actually spell out in our Destination 2027, which is obviously our strategic plan, not only the importance of analyzing programmatic operations and effectiveness and alignment, but when we're really talking about fiscal stewardship and resource allocation, we want to make sure that we're operating with efficiency and providing the best opportunity to provide programmatic exposure. This includes making sure that seats are filled and we're maximizing the resources that we are putting forth towards programmatic needs across our district. And so we share this, but obviously, it's important to talk about. We need to be strategic and focusing on our acts of improvement. And we've come before you every year with recommendations, whether it is to consolidate, streamline, or provide expansion opportunities to make sure that we're impacting the most amount of students through fiscal stewardship and resource allocation. And so throughout our programmatic review process, this really dates back to about 12 months ago, when we began our program choice survey with stakeholders and families and worked with our schools and school improvement teams regarding the different programmatic themes that they had. Throughout the course of the window of the program choice, after our Program Choice Futures Fair, we looked specifically at enrollment trends. Where were students coming from? Where were they gathering from across the county? What programmatic themes were they interested in? What did the K-12 pipeline look like? And of course, where was their waitlist data to be able to support that there was a large interest or demand from our community? Additionally, we want to look at things like academic success or success across program areas. We're going to compare students in the program to other students or like peers, but we may also look at accreditation and authorization processes for statuses of those programs. Depending on the program, you may have an international authorization process, such as InterBaccalauria, or you may have something that is statewide, like the STEM School of Distinction process through the rubric. And then last but not least, obviously, we're continuing to gather input from school leadership teams and parent surveys. None of these data points directly informs one recommendation or another. We have to look and balance and weigh all of these things against the competing priorities, as we shared previously.
Good evening. Before we begin with our recommendations for you this evening, we want to highlight a few areas that we're proud to list that happened in the 24-25 school year with our program choice schools. Northwest Cabarrus High School, which will be recognized at our next board meeting, became a North Carolina School of Distinction, being recognized by the State Board in September. Weddington Hills became, also successfully completed their primary year's program evaluation that was conducted in February of 2025. That is a rigorous process and takes multiple months, so we're happy for them. Of the 20 Cabarrus County schools that earned an A or B, there are 11 that were program choice. That's our third highlight. And our last, seven of the 16 program choice programs did have waitlists in the 25-26 school year. And so this slide provides you with a comprehensive view of the programs that we do offer, what their pathway connections are within the district, how they are funded, what the authorization, which Sarah mentioned previously, and then what is their access? Are they a program within the school? Are they whole school? And so also, on the left-hand side, you'll see how many applications we received by December 2024. And of course, we accept, we have families that accept 1,300 seats. Please note that we do have families who submit multiple applications. And our total program choice enrollment for the 25-26 school year is 8,900 students. And so we're going to go over each of the six recommendations for you for next week to consider. And I'm just going to briefly list those, and then we'll get deep, dive deeper into those. So first, we want to look at expanding magnet seat opportunity at Patriots for STEM students. And that would increase three schools to four for STEM seats that are magnet. We want to recommend completing a comprehensive evaluation of our IB program at West Cabarrus to make a decision later this year around a four-year pathway for West Cabarrus, specifically that high school, to include a middle-year program. We also want to encourage and boost enrollment in multiple of our academies, including hospitality, architecture, and also consider flexible enrollment for our Public Safety Academy. And then we have three new opportunities that we're really excited to talk to you about. We have the partnership with the Pearl, and that would lead us to be kind of a first district to have an AI-driven healthcare program that would offer expansion opportunities for our students in really exciting new ways. We want to introduce a pathway allowing our middle school students to earn up to four high school credits before ninth grade. And Dr. Auerbach is here to talk about that at Concord Middle. And finally, our last recommendation is for pre-K classroom tuition base at Bethel and Patriots. And so for our first recommendation, we are recommending that Patriots have STEM magnet seats that are offered next year for 26-27 school year. We did have a waitlist at both Coltrun Web and Arbrown McAllister for this year that we could not provide seats for children. And so this would allow for seats to be offered. And as you can see, the recommended map would balance out the district, basically, in four very succinct areas for specifically magnet seats. The next recommendation would be that we conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the two-year IB program at West Cabarrus High School and make consideration for expanding that program to include a four-year program. We want to talk with students, community members, counselors, not just at West Cabarrus, but also at Winkler, and identify what would be the best pathway forward for an IB. Do we need two IB pathways? Do we need, we have our Concord, and then we would be considering a West Cabarrus. Then we have three academies that remain below target levels as far as enrollment. So we want to do some different strategies and piloting ways to increase access as well as enrollment. And so we would like to provide flexibility for our Public Safety Academy. And then for our other two academies, Hospitality and Tourism at Concord High and Architecture and Construction at Mount Pleasant, work to do some strategy around marketing to get more students interested in those programs and enrolled. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
So I think it's important to know, when we're talking about all of the tweaks or recommendations at this point, we're not expecting or asking for any financial expectations. It's really utilizing and being good fiscal stewards for the programs that already exist within our county and being able to offer up that opportunity for more students. At this point, I'd like to introduce Melanie Ritter, our Director of CTE, who's going to share a little bit more about the opportunity to partner with the Pearl. I do want to thank in advance Dr. Richard Cox, who was here earlier this evening. He is the STEM Lab Coordinator for the Pearl Innovation District. He was actually here with us earlier this evening, but obviously, I wanted to make sure he could get home with his family. But he is here in full support of what we are about to launch to you today, which is really the first of its nation in terms of a workforce development pipeline that directly partners with a workforce partner who has actively sought us out and been willing to collaborate for the leadership that we've had at the county, not only with Ms. Ritter, but across the board in terms of how we have led, not only in our K-12 STEM pipeline, but also as it relates to our adoption early on with the computer science, which is new high school graduation credit requirement. Through this partnership, the goal is that we are proposing what's called a micro-school. The rationale behind this is that it would really be able to provide amazing opportunities for our students where they would be uniquely co-horted, but ideally not have a very large fiscal investment for us, because obviously, it's operating within an existing school structure with the resources and the means that already exist in a traditional comprehensive high school. Our proposal to you this evening is to launch and pilot for the first year 30 freshmen and 30 sophomores in a class to be able to pursue a CTE concentrator, which Ms. Ritter is going to speak to in a moment, that really is going to be one of its kind, with the opportunity for students to interface with the STEM lab at the Pearl Innovation District on a weekly basis. Through this, they would be able to engage in project-based learning opportunities, internships, as well as just opportunities to interface with workforce partners to really hear on the field, what does it look like? What does the skill set that I'm learning in the classroom translate to in the medical community? And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ritter to share a little bit more about the CTE concentrator pipeline and what students would get out of the Pearl after their four years of completion.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. The Pearl partnership basically would take that IT lens and healthcare and dovetail the two together. One interesting fact is our IT program at Cox Mill High School is overcapacity. We always have waitlist for that particular academy, and we've always looked for a way, how do we open a second information technology academy? We didn't want to replicate that exact academy, but what is, how could we take advantage of some of the opportunities with the partnership? And again, with the Pearl, it's a perfect segue of healthcare within the IT field. So we're not looking at becoming a registered nurse or those types of avenues. We're really looking at that data analytics piece. We've been the leader in Cabarrus County for computer science for several years. We've written the Coding Mobile App Grant. We've written into our curriculum maps, what does computer science look like from K-12? So we've led the charge in that respect. So we have a lot of background in the IT fields and computer science. And we were trying to think through, what does the IT lens look like? And we were trying to think through, what does the IT lens look like through healthcare? And we happened to be invited to the Pearl and kind of have conversations with Dr. Cox about what would this look like? So it's not necessarily the blood and guts, if you will, of the healthcare field. It's more of a, I'm tired, guys. It's more, it's more, it's more of a lens of the technology piece. So AI within the healthcare field using data analytics. So taking data, writing code, and having it produce the healthcare plan for somebody who may be sick. What are the symptoms? What is the healthcare plan for that particular individual? With data analytics, it also projects. So maybe a patient isn't currently ill, but between, you know, family diagnosis and things like that, what does the lens look like from somebody maybe my age into, you know, my 90, becoming 90 years old? What are some health situations I may face? And how can I have a treatment plan now to help avoid some of those situations? So we've also talked a lot about the prototyping piece, and that's not necessarily in the pathway yet. But, you know, my daughter went to the orthodontist and they printed her retainer right there and within 10 minutes and handed it to her. So those are some of the things that this particular career academy, micro school would be focused on. And really, if you think about J.M. Robinson High School, they already have the engineering lens. They have a very strong health science program there, and they've actually expanded. They have two teachers now, which we're very grateful for the work that they've done there to recruit students and kind of ramp up those programs with that engineering piece. That lends itself directly to the ideology behind the Pearl Innovation Labs. They have a great STEM lab down there. One of the benefits for us in the partnership is students would be able to go into a state-of-the-art institution and do STEM activities on a regular basis. And that is something, you know, as a county, as a school system in CTE, we're not, we're not able to provide those opportunities directly in our buildings because the machinery is too expensive. Millions of dollars worth of robotics equipment within the building. They have a STEM lab already available down there for us. So they have the fun gadgets, and we have a lot of really cool things in our county, don't get me wrong. But, you know, a $2 million lab is just, is not feasible. But getting students to a lab and having them partner with industry experts to learn how to use the equipment, how, what they're learning in the classroom applies directly to the lab and directly into the medical field is really a partnership that would be unique, that it's not being done across the nation right now.
So I think it's important to also note, when we're talking about fiscal stewardship and resource allocation, the intent is not to expand. At this point, we're really looking to make sure that we repurpose state and federal funding that already exists for us to maximize this opportunity for our students. The key cost, obviously, is going to be the local transportation to get our students to the STEM lab to have that experience on a weekly basis. But we really believe very strongly that in working in collaboration with community partners, we are going to continue to actively seek out grant funding to expand upon this opportunity for students because as Ms. Ritter shared, as well as the support from Dr. Cox, this is definitely a very high-interest opportunity. And certainly, we know that with this opportunity, there would be a lot of folks that would be very interested in watching us to be able to lead the way in this area. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Dr. Auerbach and his leadership team to share the next proposals as it relates to Concord Middle School's Academy of Global Innovation.
Hi, good morning. As you know me, this is way past my bedtime. But, um, but thank you all so much for having us here tonight. First, before we get started to talk about the academy, I just want to say it's been a great year at Concord Middle so far. We've had just a wonderful year with our students, the staff, the community. Everything has been going great. It's hard to believe the first quarter is almost up. But in talking about where we wanted to go with Concord Middle, we really had an interesting situation at Concord, right? So all of our feeder schools are STEM elementary schools that come up to us. But the very successful high school that has a very successful IB program as well as two CTE academies that are going very well. So how, what do we do at the middle school that's in between those to make it work for both sets? So where we got, where we landed is the Academy of Global Innovation. So we're very excited about this and the plan that we have to really take where our students are coming from with all of that STEM education, but get them ready to go into high school that has lots of options around CTE and global studies. Really focusing on getting our students ready, all of our students ready to be in high school and have opportunities to earn high school credits before they get there, which is huge because that opens up a lot of doors for more electives and more studies when they get to high school. You know, there's a lot of requirements in high school credits, you know, the mandatory graduation requirements. But if we can get some of our students to earn those credits before they get into high school, really opens a lot of doors. So using the math and science in action and then our global connections really gets them set up in high school. So when talking to families and talking to the community, they really wanted to see something special at Concord Middle. So when we kind of put this together, it's something different, something new, and something that we get to create and make a very exciting opportunity for all of our students at Concord Middle and all of the students in Cabarrus County Schools to come to Concord Middle. We have the space. We have a very great facility and staff that's really excited to make this happen. I think one of the parts that's really exciting for us is we're going to build this ourselves. You know, grassroots, getting our staff involved in it to really make sure that it works. It's not a canned program that we're pushing down on them. They're going to be involved in helping to really drive this and work in collaboration with Pearl and the community and to make this the best middle school program that can be for all of our students here in Cabarrus County. So we're looking forward to getting this started next year.
And again, I think it's important to underscore, again, talking about fiscal stewardship, it would be the repurposing of an allotment, and then we would use additional dollars out of specifically our state funding to support with some curriculum writing and development. But beyond that, the other incentive to this is that it would not require any expansion funds in terms of local dollars to be able to support this programmatic theme. And last but not least, is the recommendation around tuition-based pre-kindergarten, specifically in two of our sites. This has been driven specifically by the 350 students that are currently on the NC pre-K waitlist, as well as the eight students that currently are on our Mary Frances Wall tuition list, and then the numerous families that call Mary Frances Wall on a daily basis and ask if we have seat availability, if their student is not eligible for NC pre-K but would be willing to pay the tuition costs. We've worked directly with the partnership to share this opportunity with them. They were very excited about the possibility of being able to expand early childhood seats in Cabarrus County schools. The key to this is, again, we would not open this opportunity up unless we can make sure that the tuition costs would cover any additional expansion costs as it relates to opening those pre-K classrooms. We do have the benefit of already having the upstarting in terms of the furniture available to us. So again, this would be a program that really would generate enterprise funding to fund itself. It would not be an additional cost, but ideally getting students in earlier to our schools and really meeting the demand that we are hearing and seeing, not only from NC pre-K, but from our own employees as well. I think it's important to also note that while it would be tuition-based, this would also be eligible for vouchers as well. And we certainly have heard from our local neighboring community that we really could use additional opportunities for students to have seats using vouchers through DHS and other subsidy programs. So again, just additional rationale, specifically working with our four-year-olds, the proposal would be able to provide a total of 36 students. We would have a cost threshold, so anything below 16, we would not be able to accommodate. We would open the program choice window and collect the interest from our parents before we would make any decisions on whether or not we would be able to launch, knowing that we could not put ourselves in a situation where we would jeopardize ourselves in terms of running a deficit with this recommendation.
So to summarize our recommendations for your consideration, we'd like to expand magnet seats at Patriots for STEM. Complete a comprehensive evaluation of the IB program at West Cabarrus to determine the pathway that we're going to use going forward. We'd like to boost marketing and consider flexible enrollment for select academies. We would like to partner with the Pearl. We want to offer this new micro school opportunity to students to focus on AI and healthcare. Look at this opportunity for specialized pathway at Concord Middle for multiple ways to earn high school credits before the ninth grade school year. And finally, launch tuition-based pre-K at two of our sites.
So with that being said, there's a lot of recommendations, and so I'll turn it over for any questions.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. I've had a request from board members to put these individually on action for next week, so we'll do that and also to give the public an opportunity to comment on these things before we vote on them. But this is a time for our board members to ask questions and see if we get information. Pam?
Thank you. I know it's late. Timing, that's my question. Obviously, we're going to vote on this next week with the hopes that by October 15th, the Futures Fair people are going to be able to start signing up, correct? Okay. And then for the magnet seats at Patriots, are you looking at all grades? Are you specifically looking for kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
That's just kindergarten, okay. Sophomores at Pearl, same, like where, are they coming from Robinson? Or are they, the idea, same thing, people need to apply, they're going to leave whatever high school they're in now?
Yes. They would apply through the scribbled application to delineate that that was their preference, would be the Pearl for freshmen and sophomores.
For CMS, the program, is it just for program choice kids? Or can current eighth graders get, take all four of those classes to get that high school credit?
So we spoke about it. It's going to be a school-wide program, but we are going to also offer magnet seats for other families that live outside of the Concord Middle School boundary to attend.
But if you live in Concord Middle, you don't have to apply?
No, because they will, it's going to be a school-wide program, so that programmatic theming will be available to all students.
Okay. And then for pre-K, normally those windows are different than program choice. Are we going to force people to commit early? Or are we just going to leave it open until we fill it?
Our goal is to be able to start to get it early, honestly, because a lot of our families have said with waitlists and other pre-K centers, it's actually important to start now. We need to follow the same timeline as other private centers. We will leave it open, though, with a deadline of a window of the spring to be able to notify families whether or not we're going to be able to offer the opportunity based on the seats and whether or not we can fill them or not.
But first come, first serve, if you, the way it's going to work?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Pam. Anybody else? Melanie?
Okay, we have Kids Plus that operates in the, in the black, right? And we have money left over from their tuition base, right? Is this a possibility for this tuition-based pre-K to operate in a saving capacity? So I'm looking for, is there possible money coming from that to the fund balance?
In theory, at a minimum, we want to run it as an enterprise to pay the cost. I don't know that we're looking to solve the fund balance piece of it. However, we do want to ensure that there is no reliance on any other funding, that that program is self-sustaining.
So with that said, can we have a cost analysis on all these recommendations? Exactly what it will cost to get them up and running?
I'm sorry?
Dr. Kavicki, you want to respond?
So I would caution the board, I would say yes to that, but to be very careful. A lot of, not a lot, everything we're proposing to you is, is it not going to be an expense to the district? So the pre-K kindergarten, and Mrs. Reeves, if I'm speaking out of turn here, I don't think I am, will self-sustain itself. If we don't get the numbers to offset the cost, we're not going to run it, which is why we want to get the interest early. So we'll know early on, if we have the 16 students that apply and are in it, then we know we've covered the cost. If we don't get the kids to cover it, we won't, so that's done. Adam's program is definitely cost-neutral. It's not going to be of any expense because it's going to be with the teachers he has in the building and the school, and the program was created that way intentionally. The only cost on the Pearl is going to be the transportation, which is estimated at roughly $20,000, give or take. When I say give or take, it's not going to be much more than that, we'd be much less than that. I've already talked with Sarah about that. We've looked at that. I've talked with Dr. Bowers, and I've looked at my, and I can pay for that on my own budget if, on the superintendent's budget, if need be. So we have the expense covered for that. The teachers, there is no expense to that because it's going to be the teachers that we have at J.M. Robinson, where the kids are going to have to take the core classes anyway, so there's no expense there. They have to take English, they have to take history, they have to take math, they have to take science. So it's the teachers that are already in the building that they're going to be in those classrooms with those kids. All the other expenses to that, which is why Dr. Cox was here this evening, I really appreciate him coming to represent the Pearl itself, is going to be grant-funded by the Pearl and Dr. Cox's association with H.M. Health and the Wake Forest Med School that's down in the Innovation Center. So that's not going to be expensive. When I say to you, I can't give you an exact cost on that is because that's grant-funded. He's covering all that. The only expense to us, and we've been very clear about this, is we cannot fund any of it. We don't want to add any more expenses to the district, and they've been great about that. This opportunity exists for our kids to participate, as was noted earlier, to be in the STEM labs, as Ms. Ritter pointed out, to be exposed to things that they will never see in this district or anywhere else. I mean, in the nation, you're not going to see this. That, the opportunity for this is tremendous for our kids to walk into. So there's not going to be expense piece to that. So I wouldn't be able to give you a breakdown on the budget on that. I understand the question and what you want to see, but when, these are three different proposals that have three different ways that we've looked at to make sure that we're not costing the district any money. We need you to look at these recommendations, and then next week we can back and vote on them. We need the approval of the Pearl so we can say yes to it. If we say no, we lose it. We're not going to have that opportunity. And they will, if and when you approve this, we will then develop an MOU with the Pearl to come back to the board to approve the MOU. And in the MOU, you will see that it's not going to cost us any financial commitment other than the transportation cost. But we can't move forward really until the board says yes because we need your approval, and it's that simple. But all three of these are very different things we're asking that are going to improve the Cabarrus County system and, again, give our kids more access to the resources and the opportunities that exist out there. And I understand the hesitation. We talked about money quite a bit tonight, and I get it, like, I totally get it. But we have vetted these three programs. Allison has done a tremendous job. Melanie's done a phenomenal job. Sarah, I mean, she's lived with this now for a couple of months, going over and over with myself and Dr. Bowers and the entire cabinet and Phil and, you know, and not to, Melanie will be mad at me for saying this, but we have the CT Director of the Year that's coming to us with the expertise. These are good quality programs that we're recommending to you. I, if there's any hesitation or any consternation, I totally understand. But I can assure you, these are not, I don't want to say cost-neutral, because that's not true, because we're paying teachers, we're paying facilities, we're paying bills. Those are costs, everything. But it's not going to be an extra expense to the district outside of that transportation piece, which I can assure you, out of my own superintendent's budget, I can cover the $20,000 expense of that if need be. The other things that Sarah mentioned earlier before, one of the things in there, it was in the superintendent's report that was sent to you this weekend, I do understand there's been some issues with some technology with some of the board members not receiving that. We're working through it, we'll make sure that that's taken care of. But in that report, we gave you a real quick review of some of the, what this looked like. The project coordinator would be the expense we have to cover, but the project coordinator would be paid for out of state funding. We could give you an estimate on that. That's probably somewhere between $70,000 and $90,000, but that's going to be paid out of Sarah's budget and with the state funds that we already received that we've set aside for that particular issue. And Sarah could definitely give you a cost estimate on that. But you're somewhere between $70,000 and $90,000 on that. But again, that's state funds that we have to spend anyway. So we're putting good use of that revenue source to access kids to an opportunity that I'm telling you doesn't exist anywhere else in the country, at least not to my knowledge. You're going to have some phenomenal companies down there working with our kids that it's cutting-edge stuff. So I'll leave it at that, but I want to be real clear. I can't give you like a detailed breakdown on this, this, and that, but what I can say is it's not going to, we're not walking in there and someone's going to say to us, hey, here's a, now you have to give us $100,000 for this or $50,000 for this, you have to upfit this school. That's not the case. These are existing situations. And if and when you approve this, which we hope you do, then we go get the MOU, we come back to you and say, here's the MEU board, here's what we're, here's what we're on the hook for. It's not going to be financial, it's going to be the travel, the coordination, the programming, the scheduling, things of that nature. Okay? I know I just said a lot, but I just want to be really clear about this, that this is not going to add extra expenses to the district.
Melanie, good. Anybody over here? Sam?
I just want to, the partnership with the Pearl and the new programmatic ideas at Concord Middle, one of the things that I find attractive about Concord Middle, one of the things that I find attractive about them is that they're leaning into AI. Instead of saying, we're trying to resist it, we're leaning in, I see these programs being crucibles that will help all of our schools on how we can better use that in an instructional way because it is the future, whether we like it or not. I find that exciting. The other thing about the Concord Middle program, I'm excited that it is literally homegrown. I like that. We don't have to go somewhere else to find answers, the answers are quite often in the room, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sam. Catherine?
Okay, the pre-K, is it going to be a regular school day?
So we've explored two options, and the program choice option, it will, one will be an extended day and one will be a school day. We will price based on extended day costs and then school day costs when we determine the number of student interests and whether or not we can ensure that that is fiscally sustainable, then we will notify parents of what we have available.
Okay, because would they be eligible to go to Kids Plus?
It would not be Kids Plus, we would cover it within the staffing, if the existing structures between the teacher and the teacher assistant, but that is something that we already practice in pre-kindergarten classrooms.
Now, is that going to be a countywide offer or just in those two, just in the Bethel and Patriots district?
Right now, we are piloting it in those two schools, yes, ma'am.
But just in that district?
That is correct. I'm sorry, in terms of students that can apply for the program?
Right.
It will be district-wide, so you do not necessarily have to live in that area, but you would have to provide transportation.
And teachers will get first choice, possibly?
First priority, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, the Pearl?
Yes.
You're saying that they're going to go to Charlotte one day a week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so being freshman and sophomore, are they going to be able to get in those credits in four days that they need?
Absolutely, yes. We are going to work on a career continuum with Ms. Ritter to ensure that they can actually get all of the coursework that they need to meet all of the high school credit graduation requirements as well as this opportunity.
Okay. And the daycare, I'm assuming parents will provide that transportation?
To...
To the preschool?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, yes, for pre-K, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Catherine. Shannon, do you have anything?
Sarah, thank you for answering all my questions this past week. I've asked you a lot and I appreciate that.
Happy to help.
I've got some more.
No problem.
Going back to the program choice review?
Yes.
We have 8,900 students, and when you have that number, do you include the total, like, for example, the STEM elementary schools, you include everyone in that building, right?
We do not, we count applicants that are outside of the attendance zone.
Because I counted up all the ones outside of the attendance zone, it was only like 3,000 and some, so I didn't know...
3,000 for just STEM?
Well, I was confused, like Northwest High School, you just include the STEM students there, right?
There's like 100, I think there's, if I remember correctly, 180 students that are in that Northwest, but that also includes all the academy students that are going to the eight different academies in the high schools as well.
So I figured out 75% of our students are not in any kind of a program and 25% are in these program choice or academy. So does that sound about right?
It sounds about right. The whole schools, whole school model. It depends, but yeah.
Yeah.
So going back to that, we're going to graduate our first class at the College of Health Science, right? Do we have the same number of seniors that we had started out as freshmen or did any students?
We can get you those numbers, but typically in any program, like programmatic theming, you will see some matriculation throughout the course of the program. Some of that is within our control, very candidly, some of it is not.
Well, I know we like to base things on data and research.
Yep.
So do we do any kind of a study to see the money that we're putting into these programs actually comes to fruition out in the workforce? Do we ever do a study like that? Do...
Yeah, so we have the Concentrator Feedback Survey, and it gives us an indicator of where students go the year after they graduate, so that is one data point.
Okay.
We, our teams, you know, call the student or send an email survey, but it's state-driven, but really it's what are you doing now, what program did you go into after high school and those types of things. So we do have that data as well.
Okay, because these are expensive programs. I'm just wondering, are we getting our money's worth from these programs? The magnet program at Patriots, will transportation, does that require transportation needs for them?
There are already existing hub stops that would be, probably, that could provide, and we actually, with transportation, there's a minimum number of students before you actually offer a bus to families.
Okay.
And that would not change.
What will be the criteria for selecting the students for the Pearl?
That is an excellent question. So right now, basically, we would be working with Dr. Cox's team, but specifically, we would probably start out with a random lottery process if there were specific scholarship opportunities that were available within grant-seeking opportunities. There may need to be clearly defined criteria to align with those grant opportunities in the future.
And when you say repurpose CTE, does that mean it's coming from another CTE program?
Essentially, yes. So we do our review usually around February, some teacher allotments and different things, and we've already looked at some of our enrollment numbers and where we can shift, where enrollment is lower, and shift some personnel over.
Okay. And I know we talk about federal, state, and local funds, but then the day, that's all taxpayer money.
Yes.
So to me, if it's state funds or local, we still need to be good stewards of that.
Absolutely.
And I do have other questions, I wish we had this on the agenda earlier, but for time, I want to ask anymore. Concord Middle School, we committed to them that we would support them as whatever they needed. I know Dr. Aralback would do a great job, have full confidence in that. To, so the IB, will we end up having two IBs at high schools?
That's what we want to explore and do some, do some investigation around that, talking with Winkler families, look, talking to the high school, sorry.
Dr. Kavicki wants to respond to that?
I'm sorry, Dr.
No, no, don't apologize, you're exactly correct. One thing I want to just remind the board, and I appreciate the question, Mrs. Winkler, excellent question. We are, so these are, so because of the timing of this, so October, we're running into application process now, we will come back to you in the spring to what Mrs. Ritter said and give, we are going to give the board some specific recommendations about perhaps, no, not perhaps, that there'll be some programs that we're going to say, you know, we need to rethink this and we're going to recommend probably eliminating some programs that don't have the data behind it with a lot of student support and making sure that, to your point, that we're not just expanding programs left and right and adding programs in or keeping programs in that really don't have a lot of students in, and it's costing us money that we really shouldn't be spending. So I just want to reassure you that we will be coming back in the spring, looking at those programs and making the appropriate recommendation of those that we see higher participation rates and then those that we don't have that greatest participation rates and asking and recommending to the board, here's what we think. And IB is definitely one of them that we're going to take a hard look at as well.
Okay, and last, my concern about the Pearl is we're counting on grants for the funding, is that correct?
I guess it depends on what element of the funding you're speaking to.
Well, my concern with the grants is grants go away and eventually will fall on us to pay for things. So that's just something I think we need to think about.
Absolutely.
And we will make that clear, and if the board does approve this, we'll make that very clear in the MOU. Great, good point.
Okay, thank you. And the only other thing is, on the program choice summary, it would have been helpful to know what each program was costing. I don't know, maybe you can even pull that out? And it's too late this year, but...
Yeah, we're just doing the recommendations.
But maybe for next year.
That's the stated that we could ask for.
Yeah. Because, you know, our budget was funded, I think, 100% this year, wasn't it, Mr. Penn? And I don't know if we're going to have that next year, and that's my concern, so...
Thank you. Addison, you stuck around for four hours, you want to have anything on this one?
I think they're all great ideas, but I will say, I think the pre-K idea, everybody's idea is great, however, I know Dr. Ray's back there. Anyways, early intervention is really important, and we all know that, so I'm really excited to be able to provide that because I think it's, parents talk all the time about the waitlist to get their children what they need before they come to us, and this is an opportunity for us to provide that and kind of mold them, so I think that's a fantastic thing that we're starting.
Thank you. All right, well, we're going to...
Just a couple of questions.
Greg, sorry.
I'll drop some of them. Just sticking to the pre-K, because most of my questions around the Pearl have been mostly answered. Have you looked at the private childcare facilities that are in that same area and examined whether or not they have four-year-old openings right now?
So we have worked with the partnership and very candidly, we're not just looking at the geographic area, we're looking at the entire county. The reason those two areas were selected was not because we felt like there was a high concentration of need in that area necessarily, it was really about facility utilization and capacity at that point. And what we're hearing from many of our families, both in terms of vouchers, as well as NC pre-K and Mary Frances, they're willing to make the drive if they can have a spot.
So I understand that the Cabarrus County childcare has been described as a crisis and that, as with everything else that is in the Cox Mill area.
Yes, sir.
And you're telling me that people from Cox Mill will drive to Midland to drop off their kid and then go back to work in Charlotte?
That's great. We don't necessarily know that to be true. I think the important thing right now is that we're collecting the data through the scribbles application process to see what the interest is. If we do not have the interest there, we will not run the program. What we have been told from the voucher and subsidy side of the house is, yes, they very much believe that there would be families, whether it's in foster care or voucher systems, that would be willing to transport in order to provide childcare.
Okay, so, yeah, we're talking about families that are in foster care or voucher, people that apply and qualify for vouchers, but you want to have a tuition-based program for just anybody in the general public, right?
Yes, sir.
And so that's when it begins to compete with those local private childcare services. And we talked about this in our meeting, those four-year-olds are the most profitable age group for them. So especially those that are close to Patriots and Bethel, you tend, you may be taking away the most lucrative part of their, of their business model, right? And so what I'm afraid happens is, the school system comes in, undercuts the tuition rate. We haven't talked about what the tuition is going to be. Is that going to be market rate or is that going to be under-market rate for people who are no vouchers, no foster?
Yes.
They're coming in and they're paying whatever the rack rate is.
Yes, it would be at market rate, yes, sir.
It would be at market rate, okay. But that's my concern, is I don't want to create something in the market where we're making it more expensive for those birth-to-three-year-olds, right? Because we've taken away, through our expansion of this pre-K program, we've taken away the most profitable part of their business, and now they have to inflate the rates on the other part of their business. And then either they're going to go out of business or it's going to exacerbate the childcare crisis that we have rather than relieve it.
Absolutely. What I can say to you is we've been working with the partnership, Ms. Tracy Terry has been working directly with and have conversations around this. Our intent is certainly not to take away from business from other private institutions, but based on what we are seeing in figures and numbers, we believe there's opportunity for both of us to exist.
That's it, thank you. All right, again, board members, we have an opportunity to ask questions over this next week, and the public has an opportunity to come talk to us as well, and we'll be voting on these recommendations next week.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. That actually was the last item. We do have a need to go into a closed session, which we will try to make brief, but there is a motion on board docs there that explains why we need to go into closed session. I'll need a motion in a second for that. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Catherine. Discussion. All in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? All right, we're going to say goodnight to the viewing audience, and we're now in closed session.